Welcome, everyone. I will call the Dublin City Council meeting on Monday, August 13th back to order. Mike, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, welcome, everyone. We do have several different special recognitions and presentations to get through here. The Government Financial Officers Association. Randy Bartels? Randy, welcome. Thank you for coming in. What have you got to tell us?
Good evening. I am Randy Bartels. I serve currently as the City Auditor for the City of Lima. I also serve as the State Representative to the National Government Finance Officers Association. And it's in that capacity that I'm honored tonight to be here to award the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Dublin. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award Program has been in existence since 1984, and its purpose is to encourage and assist state and local governments and other public entities to prepare budget documents to the highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by National Advisory Council of state and local budgeting and the GFOA's best practices. In order to earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, the organization must meet criteria in four general areas. Budget document must meet criteria as a policy document, as an operations guide, as a financial plan, and as a communications device. This is not the first time that the City of Dublin has received this honor. In fact, tonight's presentation marks the 15th time the city has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The receipt of this award reflects the professionalism and commitment of numerous individuals, as well as many hours of hard work. It is indicative of the high level and high degree of dedication and leadership on the part of the city's Finance Director, Angel Muma, and other city elected officials. The Government Finance Officers Association hopes this award to the City of Dublin will serve as an example of accomplishment and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their budget presentations. Now, it's my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present to the City of Dublin the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Congratulations.
That's you. (applause)
She is our Budget Manager, and she does a tremendous job compiling the document and working with all the departments. And thanks to all the departments and City Council and Dana for your support of the Finance Department. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Angel and Melody. You know, in many ways, the most flattering thing you can do is be recognized by your peers, especially in an industry that's this complicated and unbelievably complex and the challenges that we face, it is really saying a lot. So, we're very proud of you, Dana, and all of the finance staff that puts all this together that keeps this whole operation running. So, thank you for everything that you do. Riley Hickey, don't we have family members of Riley's here? Come on up. You guys aren't going to be... If you guys haven't heard of Riley Hickey, you're going to be shocked when you hear what it is that has been accomplished. Why don't you tell us who you are and...
Okay. My name is Anne Marie Hickey, and I'm Riley's mom. She's 21. She's just graduated from college in three years in New York City, and she just won a Tony for co-producing "Once on This Island," a Best Revival Musical at the Tony Awards.
And I have a little bit to... So, I'm going to add this, and then you can add whatever you want to wrap this up. It is always just amazing, the talent that we have in this community, and your daughter is one that is exceptional, even among the exception.
(inaudible).
So, I have a proclamation.
(laughing) Where's Tickle?
Well, there you go. That's one way to compliment, I guess. Whereas 2015 Dublin-Sayota High School graduate Riley Hickey recently earned her first... We put on here "first" so that we didn't have to white it out, but this is her first Tony Award as one of the producers of "Once on This Island." And whereas the Tony Award was presented in the category of Best Revival of a Musical and was one of eight Tony Award nominations for the musical. And whereas "Once on This Island" also received a nomination for the 2018 Drama Desk Award for Outstanding Revival of a Musical. And whereas Hickey graduated May 22nd at Radio City Music Hall from Pace University's Lubin School of Business with a Bachelor's Degree in Arts and Entertainment Management. And whereas she returned June 10th to Radio City Music Hall where she received her Tony Award. How cool was that? So, she graduated, she came back to get a Tony Award?
I was at both.
Wow.
Yeah.
I imagine you had good seats, too. Whereas in honors, in honors student...
We might have better ones next year.
You might get better and better. Yeah, you're a good point. ...the musicals and plays. And whereas some of the other productions she has worked on include Anastasia, Dear Evan Hansen in Kinky Boots.
(laughing)
All right? Yeah, why not? She recently took a job working for the television show Law &amp; Order SVU in New York. And whereas, as a student at Dublin-Sayota, listen to this, her achievements and memberships include the National Honor Society, Student Senate, New Student Volunteers, Student Cabinet, Biomedical Research Academy, Yearbook Editor, Newspaper Editor, and Varsity Cheerleading Captain, and she was also a Lindsey C. Rice Scholarship Recipient. Now, therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate Riley Hickey on her great achievements in the arts and entertainment industry and wish her many more successes in what promises to be an outstanding career. Signed this 13th day of August 2018.
Thank you so much. (applause) (inaudible) (inaudible)
You'll be able to see this on the net, too. She can watch.
On what?
It's... This is streamed live.
Oh, the last thing I want to see is myself. No, but I do...
I admit, your daughter might want to see it.
Oh, well, she might. Yeah. We tried to FaceTime her. Okay. We did try to FaceTime her, but she's working. I just wanted to give a shout-out to your next recipient, Roger Rabel, because he was one of her teachers, and he wrote her college recommendations. So, he's an awesome guy.
Wow, small world.
You know, everything goes around. So, thank you so much to the City of Dublin, City Council, Dublin City Schools. We are very proud of Riley.
Please pass along our pride to your daughter the next time you have a chance.
Thank you very much. This is wonderful.
Thank you. Roger Rabel, come on up here.
Well, speaking of good things that happened at Dublin-Sayota High School, he's one of the best. Donna, come on up. You're not going to go unscathed. I get Greg allowed me to give this to you. Roger and I went to high school together, and I see his mom and dad out there. Are the boys not here?
No.
Soccer practice. We have a proclamation for you as well. It was really fun to go to the ribbon-cutting for the new Emerald Campus and see the space that's going to be allocated to Roger and the things that he does there, among many other of our talented educators in this community, but he teaches the Biomed Academy. It's been housed at Sayota for how many years?
Five.
Five years. So, now it'll be at our new Emerald Campus. So, here's a proclamation. Whereas Dublin-Sayota High School teacher Roger Rabel has been named the 2018 Ohio Science Teacher of the Year by the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation. And whereas, the award recognizes teachers for their outstanding talents and leadership skills and their unwavering dedication to the profession. And whereas, a science teacher for Dublin City Schools since 1992, Roger has taught AP Biology... We're aging ourselves, aren't we? ...at Dublin-Sayota since its opening in 1995. And whereas, Rabel established the school's Biomedical Research Academy, which will be part of the Emerald Campus beginning this fall. And whereas, in conjunction with the award, he will receive a $7,500 grant, which will be used to develop a cardio-respiratory-themed learning unit. And whereas, the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation recognizes that deep learning and excellent teaching starts at the classroom level. And teachers like Roger Rabel have demonstrated a commitment to preparing Dublin students for the future. Now, therefore, he, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate Roger Rabel and thank him for the incredible work that he does on a daily basis, providing our students with the knowledge they need to be successful, as we just saw, in their chosen professions. Signed this 13th day of August 2018.
I'd like to thank Chris and City Council and Dr. Hodley, our Superintendent, and Mrs. Hickey, for the props there. I don't know how effective I was with Riley, though she ended up going into arts and entertainment. But anyway, yeah, I've been very fortunate to have taught some of Dublin's best and brightest students, many of whom are going on to become doctors and nurses and physical therapists, but also some that are entering into other areas and have some experience in research that they take with them, that regardless of their chosen profession, they can succeed. So, I just am very thankful for this award. I think there's a lot of great, great science teachers in Dublin that would be equally deserving, and maybe it's just a testament to the longevity and being in the right place at the right time. So, I'd like to thank everybody for that. Thanks to my wife as well.
Congratulations, Riley. Yep. Okay, one more, and an important one. Anybody that's had the opportunity to stop out at the Miracle League will know what an unbelievable facility it is that is out there. And there has been a person that's been there, I believe, since day one, who's contributed heavily to the success of that program and to what it means to all of the participants and the family and to our community, and that's Joe Fox. Joe, come on up. I'll tell you a little bit about Joe. Joe was first served as the League Director for the Miracle League of Central Ohio, and he has been doing that for more than a decade. Whereas Joe personally dedicates every Saturday of his summer to the league, setting up the field, handing out uniforms, announcing the games, serving food to the players, and singing, "Take Me Out to the Ballgame" with the kids, which is always a crowd favorite. And whereas, in addition to volunteering 15 to 20 hours a week of his time, he also watches the weather hourly during the season to ensure the safety of every child. And whereas Joe, along with many Miracle League volunteers, changes the lives of a growing segment of our population, and he does it daily with a big smile and an incredible attitude. And whereas, when he is not on the baseball diamond, Joe is the Director of Emerging and External Technologies for Ashland. He has served on the Board of Directors of the Innovation Research Interchange, Polymer Ohio, in the Ohio Bio-Products Innovation Center. And whereas Joe was recognized in 2014 with the Ashland Chairman's Award for Community Enrichment for his services to the Miracle League. And whereas Joe puts everything he has into making the Miracle League a special experience for not only the players, but also for the families, friends, fans, and everyone involved. Now, therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, congratulate Joe Fox for his tremendous dedication and service to the Miracle League of Central Ohio and for making it possible for children who might otherwise not be able to enjoy America's favorite pastime. Signed this 13th day of August 2018. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you to council for this honor. I'm accepting this on behalf of the nearly 400 volunteers who make the Miracle League what it is. We had another great year, nearly 280 players from 57 different ZIP codes. Mother Nature cooperated. We had some hot Saturdays, but we played 75 out of 80 games, which is a great season. And I just want to say, I can't say thank you enough to City Council for the tremendous support that we have received. Just some examples from this past year. The dugouts were painted. The Special Olympics training stations were installed near the playground. And the Hall of Fame, which remembers the players, buddies, and coaches who have passed away since the league began, was created and installed. So, it was just another fantastic season. I cannot say thank you enough. I want to thank all the people, the volunteers from the Miracle League who have come here tonight. This really is an honor, and I appreciate it very, very much.
You know, Joe, I've been out there a few times, and for the people that don't know, it's on Dari Field. You sort of go around to the back of the park there, and the facility is back there. It's an absolutely fantastic facility, and every single time you go out there, if you don't believe miracles can happen, go out there and watch a baseball game, because miracles happen every single time they take the field. And it is only through people like you, Joe, that allows that to happen. So, I guess we would just turn around that appreciation and express it to you on behalf of a grateful community that you do what you do. So, thank you very much. Citizen comments. I don't have a list. We have a sheet out there. You're supposed to sign in if you want to say something, and nobody signed in. Did anybody forget or didn't know they were supposed to do that? If you do, you just raise your hand, and we'll give you the microphone for five minutes. Talk about whatever you want. Seeing no hands, we will move along. The Consent Agenda, I move approval of the three items, which are meeting minutes of three different of the meetings. I would move approval of those three Consent Agenda items. Is there a second?
A second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Introduction, first reading ordinance is ordinance 46-18.
Amending the City of Dublin Community Plan to Add a Special Area Plan, Dublin Corporate Area Plan for the Legacy Office Area, including the Metro, Blazer, and Emerald Districts, covering approximately 987 acres bordered by Westbridge Street to the North Emerald Parkway to the West, France Road to the East, and Helen Cross Lane Boulevard to the South.
I'll introduce it. Deviani, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. You should be on. Dublin Corporate Area Plan has been a great collaborative effort with our economic development team, planning, our stakeholders, as well as our consultants. Steve Cole was as here from Pod Design, and Jason Suri from Side Street Planning. Jason and I are teaming up for presentation tonight. I will quickly go through background for this project, state purpose of the plan. Jason will highlight contents of the plan, and I'll conclude with next steps and recommendation. So, as any special area plan, the planning process began at looking at our existing community plan. Our last updates were done in 2013, but we also have several special area plans within community plan, which build on recommendations of the community plan, but also provide detailed, specific recommendations for very focused geography within the community plan. So, Dublin Corporate Area Plan is a special area plan, and if adopted, will be 10th special area plan within community plan. Zoning is another tool that we use to implement some of the recommendations of special area plans to govern land development and pattern. Purpose of the plan. So, as we started to look at our study area, which includes Metro Center, Blazer District, and other office development within the city, we looked at when this development happened. So, this shows, this graphic shows when offices started to get built through the study area. The black outline is our study area. So, starting with 1970s, 80s, 90s, 2000, 2010. So, there are very few pink dots for office development after 2010s. This graphic shows that 80% of our office space is between 17 and 45 years old. So, the focus of the study area is how we can revitalize our legacy office complexes within the city. At the same time, our economic development team was looking at changing work environment as we try to attract new talent, specifically millennials, within our companies. And according to the report that's included in your packet by our Economic Development Team, talent attraction is driving change in commercial real estate, specifically driven by flexibility, work-life benefits, and walkable amenities and entertainment close by. So, this area is positioned between our Bristre District, which is a new development, and West Innovation District, which also offers several opportunities for a more integrated development. In this case, it's slightly different, because we have already office development within the study area. So, the goal is to, as we were looking at the study area, the goals were to reposition these legacy office sites for success, creating walkable mixed-use environment, identifying underserved markets, establishing a strategy to refresh France Road, recommending mechanisms so we are not impacting our neighborhoods, recommending zoning tools for successful implementation, and introducing consistent and compatible architectural and site design So, planning process began by looking at existing conditions. We engaged our stakeholders throughout the planning process. We finalized our recommendations, and Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed our draft plan, and now we're in adoption stage. Phase one for this plan began with very specific element that we wanted to look at, which was parking. As we were looking at vacancy rates and as companies were asking for extra, more or higher parking ratios within legacy offices, we invited our focus group, which included businesses, tenants, real estate brokers, trying to understand why parking is very critical for these offices. But during the discussions, it was clear that it was not only parking, but other amenities such as restaurants, personal services nearby, or any entertainment options they were lacking in this area. So, that's how we began our phase two, which is Dublin Corporate Area Plan. This shows several opportunities that we had to engage with our stakeholders and use different tools that, so that we can engage a larger audience, starting with public workshop setting, web-based surveys, to very small roundtable intimate discussion with our stakeholders. We introduced the plan at Planning and Zoning Commission in May, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval in June. The correspondence with our stakeholder was, we use various tools for that, email correspondence at every stage of the process. Some of that is included in your packet, one-on-one meetings with our stakeholders from residents to business communities. We also engaged with our companies within the study area. This is the example that shows the support that we receive from our business community.
I'm just going to walk through a brief overview of the contents of the plan, and then obviously will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Is, as part of this plan, we really started to think about what the outcome should be that was unique to this particular portion of the city. And one of the things that is most notable, of course, is the age of the office that exists, but also the fact that there's a variety of occupancy, and there's a variety of economic vitality across those different property owners and different buildings. A lot of this clearly is not in keeping with what the most modern trends of office selection and office retention are. At the same time, we realized you couldn't just wholesale reinvent this very, very large area in a super short period of time, particularly in the fact that there are many of these businesses and many of these property owners that are still deriving manageable revenue, and in some cases, very good revenue off of these buildings. At the same time, there are others that are looking for ways to reposition this so it's more successful, both in the near term, and then lead to what could be a long-term solution. So, what we looked at was a way to do that in the context of really repositioning this for the next generation of use as we get to what could be that future positioning. A market study was done to determine what near-term opportunities exist, and the start areas were identified as some of the key sites that could infill some of the, some of the businesses, some of the things that were desired in the area that weren't being accommodated right now. In order to understand that, Pete DeSaba with DDA took a look at overall spending power. One of the most significant things that he noted was that there are a lot of hotel stays here, and there are very few places for folks in those hotels to go without driving out of the area. And I think most of you know, if you've traveled for business, oftentimes, the thing that you want is the closest thing. You would like the best thing, but you would really like the best, closest thing, and we have neither. We just have very few things in this area to accommodate many of the people who are staying here, and that is a huge market that obviously could be captured. Right now, there is a market for a certain amount of both restaurants, specialty food, and personal care that could go in, according to Pete's estimate, today and be supported. And of course, a lot of these things are situations where as redevelopment occurs, then even more can be supported. And what we started to do is think about where we could locate these in the near term, and then how we would position things better in the long-term area. So, what we developed was a Future Line Use Plan that indicates some fairly large districts that seek to simplify some of the ways that the area is behaving now. And what we looked at are different mixed-use regional districts with slightly different characteristics. The most important thing was the ability to mix different uses where possible and where appropriate, and to start to rethink some of the ways that the overall sites are utilized. As Deviani mentioned, we first got into this because a number of tenants were worried about the fact that they felt like they couldn't get enough parking. We did an overall view of what that parking circumstance was, and we found that in almost all cases, there actually was enough parking, or perhaps an excess of parking, but in certain cases where things were very much transitioning, there was not. And you, of course, know of one of those sites right now, which is down by France Road, where an additional parking lot was just added. Typical things that transitioned that were buildings that used to be multi-tenant, became single-tenant, individual office spaces got smaller. So, what we started to look at were different ways to think about the code, the landscaping, and the overall approach to these development sites so we could inform the next code process. That being said, what we did look at were these undeveloped sites that are still existing there, knowing that some of the other sites may also develop again in the future. But we started to think about what the likely impacts would be in the near term based on the sites that have yet to have been developed. Essentially, the outcome is that there were a few general recommendations that then will become more specific as we, as the city goes through the zoning process over the next year. Those include the fact that we developed a general height parameter, and we tried to push the taller buildings along the 270 frontage, in fact, allowing significantly taller buildings, and in fact, trying to encourage that so when redevelopment does occur, that could have a densification of that particular area. Along the France Road frontage, we heard very clearly from the constituents that we met with, particularly the neighboring communities, that they would like those to be lower-scale buildings. We do think that could also be a different approach to the frontage that would activate that to a certain extent. Right now, it is quite inactive, and we think there are opportunities to develop something along there, at least for the next generation of use, that could be very suitable and a great amenity for the adjacent office. These are some character images that are ideas of the ways that things could potentially develop. As I mentioned, the two-story type idea along France Road doesn't mean that it can't be a vibrant and exciting place, and that lower right photo. And then the notion is to recreate green spaces, so there are public amenities. Right now, to a certain extent, Metro Center has that, but most agreed that there was very little publicly accessible green space that felt like a place that you would want to enter if you weren't already working there. And then also, the opportunity to potentially add some other mixes of uses in there where it's appropriate. Along France Springs Road area, the things that were specifically identified were the opportunities for a full-service restaurant and some service retail. There are very few places right now that are amenable to business lunches and to after-work gatherings. And then also, these notions of a small-format grocery, this has really been emerging around the central Ohio market, and we think this is a location that could potentially support that. There are also some larger-scale recommendations that weren't directly related to development, and those had to do with connectivity, sustainability, and of course, implementation. Connectivity, identifying some large moves that could be made in the future to start to connect this overall roadway grid, which now is very limited once you get off of those few... few main thoroughfares, and in particular, some way to additionally get across 270, thereby linking everything a little more completely. And then we did look at pretty thoroughly different sustainability opportunities that would take place, particularly in these areas where right now, we have a huge amount of pavement. We think that a lot of the recommendations for landscaping were very successful over the years, and edge screening. Unfortunately, a lot of the opportunities inside the parking lots were not as effective as they could have been, and so we're looking at opportunities to modify those with the upcoming zoning change that's taking place. In addition, some thought was given to the France Road corridor itself, freshening up the landscape, finding a way to systematize the way gateways happen, and the way that pavement markings and other streetscape elements can indicate the opportunity to enter and exit this development site overall, and give it a little bit more of a cohesive identity. On that note, we did develop some basic design and development guidelines. Again, these are not code, but what these are doing is informing the upcoming process of code development, and these have to do with all of these characteristics that are listed on the left, and go into a level of detail that is enough to guide the future process of actually enacting these into code, so that would be specific for any future developments.
In terms of timeline, we are at the topmost step. It's council review, adoption process for the plan. Following that, we will do background investigation on our core rezoning process. Again, these steps are very significant public engagement processes, so we'll have to work a lot with our stakeholders on those. So it will go through 2019. In terms of recommendation, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval in June. We also had resident representatives at the meeting, and they supported the planning process. We have also heard from business community, they have supported this planning process. So staff recommends approval at second reading scheduled on August 27. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Chris?
Are you proposing that we do an area rezoning, a mass rezoning of these areas, or would they be rezoned parcel by parcel?
Will be mass rezoning.
Well, I have some concerns about mass rezoning, and I don't know that it has served us as well as it possibly could have in other areas where we've done mass rezonings. So I guess I'd like for us to have a conversation about, you know, what we think moving forward with an area-wide or a mass rezoning. This report is really good, thank you for that. There's a lot of great information here, and I think that you did take a tremendous amount of time to listen to the stakeholders and residents, and I want to commend you for that and certainly appreciate that. One of the concerns, the only other concern that I still have is the prescriptive nature of building materials. I am not in favor of prescribing the use of glass as the main, this is a big area, and if the primary material in all of these buildings in this entire area is glass, you know, design trends are going to change and morph over time, and, you know, they are really primarily using glass in one application type these days, where you have these giant curtain walls of glass. And I don't know that we want, how many acres was this?
Nine hundred and ninety.
Nine hundred and ninety acres of primarily glass buildings. I cannot support this where we encourage the use of glass, and we discourage the use of stone and other natural materials that some of the most beautiful buildings in the world are constructed of, to the lower floors. You know, that, we do mention brick with stone sills and lentils, but I think the application of that material can be much higher. You know, natural material, I get that glass is natural material, but traditional natural material buildings seem to test, to pass the test of time, and nearly a thousand acres of glass buildings, I, we need to, I really feel pretty strongly, we need to remove that language of building materials and talk about the level of quality we want, and let great designers design great buildings.
I think that sort of goes back to some of what Jane has talked about in the past, which is describing the character of what we're looking for versus having a prescription for the materials, which I would be very much in favor of doing, is sort of describing a little bit, spending a little more time on the character and the feel of what we're looking for, and maybe a little bit less on how prescriptive we are about the use of glass and other things.
Yeah, and I can speak to that for a second. It was never an intention of this to prescribe all glass buildings for all these acres. Glass is but an element, stone, brick, if that is not clear, that is, was never and is not intended as the application. You could get buildings as diverse as any you would see. I think what we're trying to discourage is the use of materials that we don't want. And it's sometimes easier, because tastes change, to say the ones you do want than to keep having to chase a moving target. So whether those were brick, whether those were stone, whether they were glass, I think the intent is that they would be highly transparent, meaning that you wouldn't have just a blank stone or a blank brick facade, but there would be windows and there would be transparency in that. So if that's not clear, we can certainly take a look at rewriting those, because that's undoubtedly the intention of the design.
Well, if I were a designer and someone hired me to design a building in this area, and I picked up the corporate area plan and I read glass, the use of glass as a main, as a main material is encouraged. Glass on first floor should be transparent and allow views into the building. Use of transparent, non-opaque glass is encouraged throughout. I would start designing a glass building.
We will reword it, because that is, I assure you, not the intent. What it means is that we don't want you to have opaque glass and no windows. That's really all it means.
Got it. Yeah, I think, I think a lot of this has to be left up to the architects. What we're going to end up with in the end, though, is a master plan that's going to be very specific, correct? I mean, we're going to put the money and time in this, and I think this is a great endeavor to improve this area, which is probably done in the eighties, and really needs a shot in the arm to upgrade it, and to get the kind of commercial tax base we need back into this area. But when this is finished, as I read your timeline, we're going to end up with a comprehensive master plan, right? It's going to, that we're going to vote on as an area rezoning.
Correct.
That's, that's the intent, and that's where we're going to finish.
So is the alternative, Chris, is it like going back to a PUD process, parcel by parcel?
Oh, certainly no. I mean, when, as redevelopment happens, people would come in, the zoning on many of these, if it were redevelopment, might not change the architectural style and things. It would, the use would be almost identical if it were an office, because many of these uses are already permitted. But, no, I mean, they could come in as a PUD if that's what they were interested in more a larger scale, if they assembled several parcels or something like that, a PUD might be more appropriate for them.
Would that give, this plan give you the flexibility to do that?
Sure.
There, yes. I mean, so the idea is same like Brist Street District, where people can keep their existing development standards, but also have opportunities to introduce some of the uses which are not permitted currently per current zoning. So idea is to keep it, make it more streamlined in terms of process, very similar to Brist Street District Planning and Zoning Commission review, because there are some existing standard zoning districts too, within the study area.
You know, the hope is, I think, if you put in these interesting nodes, and you put in these restaurants, and these green spaces, some of these buildings are really time-worn, to be honest with you, and they will take them down and reestablish a new basis to that area. I mean, that's what we're hoping for, I think, and I hope that's the direction you're taking this.
Yes. I have a question about what you were just saying. If it's already zoned commercial, could we not change guidelines on, I mean, I want to understand the whole reason for doing a mass rezoning. If we're already zoned, commercial restaurants can go in there, we might not have residential, we might be able to add that, and if we can create a master plan about what this looks like, is the effort of doing a mass rezoning necessary? I think we all understand, and I certainly do, that we have to update this office park area, obviously, but maybe I need to understand a little bit about why it needs to be mass rezoned.
So I just put up the existing zoning map. If you see, there are several different PUDs within the planning area. Blue and red areas are standard zoning districts, which have completely different development standards, permitted uses. All these other PUDs have various different standards, PUDs. In case of Metro Center, there are very limited development standards. Some of that depends on existing deed restrictions, which were, I think, done in nineteen eighties. So in terms of standards, there is no consistency throughout this planning area. So with rezoning and looking at more consistent zoning districts, the idea is to, again, streamline the process, but also let developers have that idea that, you know, what can go there, because it changes from parcel to parcel in this planning area.
That makes perfect sense, thank you.
And hopefully, when you do this, you're going to unify this whole space. The roads, because you're right, when we zoned this, and I was around, I was on planning and zoning from eighty to eighty-eight, it was taken small parcel by small parcel. The architectural unity really wasn't created, it was created with a whole lot of ash trees to tie all those different styles of architecture together, which are obviously no longer there today. And so it looks a little incongruous, dilapidated, it's like a picket fence where the pickets have been knocked out. And so hopefully, when you come back, you're going to have all that in a comprehensive, cohesive fashion. That's what we're shooting for.
Absolutely.
And the rezoning of that doesn't necessarily accomplish that. What accomplishes what you're talking about is the area plan. Just like our community plan has guided the development in our community in different forms and fashions, and you have this corporate area plan, which is essentially a small district community plan that will guide the development, so that when the developers come in, they will know that this, just like in any other area of our, our community, they would come and see our community plan, and they would know what, what we were looking for to happen in those areas. This document would provide that identical guidance to anybody wanting to develop or redevelop in this district.
Great.
That, you know, one of the difficulties in the other mass rezonings that we've done is then you have, you have different sign plans, because now they're rezoned, their zoning that they had isn't what they still have. So you have a lot of sign applications, and you get inconsistencies in the sign, is it auto-oriented, is it pedestrian-oriented, things of that nature, and it becomes very difficult, in my opinion, to sort through and treat all of the applicants uniformly.
Are we, once we pass, if we were to pass the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, is the rezoning necessary?
So when we engage with our residents east of France Road, if you look at all PUDs east of France Road, there are very limited standards, so neighborhoods encourage rezoning of that area, but with other districts, I mean, again, there is inconsistency in development standards for all different PUDs, so it's hard to really gauge how development will occur in future with various different standards and processes.
And that would be consistent across the city, whether we have, you know, our PUDs are...
I mean, that's the nature of a PUD, right? I mean, it's a customized deal for that piece of property. So there's never going to be two pieces of property that are the same PUD.
And that's, and that's part of the problem with this, because each piece came as a separate PUD. It was architecturally entirely different from the next piece.
Correct.
So there was this sort of, it's sort of like the American streetscape, where you have a Tudor house next to a Spanish colonial house, next to a New England house, and you have this incongruency in this whole thing, and it's sort of unattractive, but you use the streetscape to, and landscape architecture, to tie all this together, and that's how we did it back then, because we had a pretty intensive streetscape, and buffering along this whole street, all of which has probably gone in decline in the last thirty years.
But if we, if we establish these uniform, this uniform plan and standards, and we stick to it, and we hold to it, and we require it, is it necessary to rezone all of this?
I can speak as the consultant working on the, this portion of the plan and not working on the zoning, so I have no stake in whether you should rezone it, but I will say that the standards that are in place now are not guiding your development well in this area.
Right.
And so you don't have to rezone it. I would highly encourage it, but that is really up to you to decide.
Why, in your opinion, is it not guiding the development well? Well, first of all, we don't have an area plan. We have a community plan on this area.
I'll leave it at that. I, I'll let Mr. Papcidero discuss that more specifically, but in our analysis, particularly on the way that the initial site development standards were initiated with regard to the internal landscaping of the parking lots and the way that the access was happening and all that type of thing, it wasn't meeting the goals that we were trying to achieve in this plan.
Yeah.
I just want to add one quick point to this, to this conversation, which is, when you look at the zoning map, more than half of it is zoned, straight zoned. The light blue is OLR, the red and the pinkish color are commercial districts. None of that property would come through a process with a planning commission for development plan approval, and those cases, a developer, if they meet the code requirements, can go straight to building permit. Of all the reasons why we want to make, we want to streamline this process, we want to deal with that issue too, because so much of this ground, in a sense, we, the only protection we have is what is in the current code today, and it is actually very limited. So we're trying to protect the community in proposing this more comprehensive approach. Clearly, it's up to council on that that we adopt that, and it's a year-long process to reach that point, so there'll be a lot of engagement to discuss it, but that's the other, one of the major reasons why we thought this was the right approach for the entire planning area.
So you're saying the only thing that has the teeth is the zoning, the rest of this is just interesting.
This is just policy. Zoning is the law, the plan is just policy.
So in order to make this happen, we have to rezone, you're saying?
Yeah, I think if you want to make this happen in a quicker, more coherent fashion, then a zoning approach is part of that answer.
But this isn't, this isn't really code.
Correct.
These are guidelines, so even if we rezone, we don't have a code that we default to, the same code that we would default to if we didn't rezone it, because our code is our code, and this, this isn't. We'll have a rezoning that will ask to be uniform to the area plan, where we can ask them to conform to the area plan without rezoning all of the parcels up front, and it gives us the ability to not just check the boxes, did you meet this, did you meet this, did you meet this, but to make sure that we get, you know, he says it's not serving us well now, I think that's because we don't have a plan. We only have code. If we rezone them, all we're still going to have is code, that's because we didn't write any new ones.
So effectively, this is an amendment to the community plan, and that's a flexible planning document, it's something you refer to when you're going through a rezoning, but in order to apply those standards and give them teeth, they would have to come in for a rezoning each and every time you redeveloped in this area, so we would lose efficiency with the process. We're not changing a lot of the uses, so hopefully, the property owners wouldn't be as concerned, but again, this is kind of the first step, this, you don't have to adopt code after approving this, we can go through some of the public input and get more guidance, and that would come to you subsequently.
And that was that year-long process timeline that was up there.
But this is good, the area plan is, with a few changes, I, thank you, I do think that the, that the plan is really, it's well-done, it's articulate, and it's thorough, so.
Do we know, so you pointed out the thing that worries me about things like the glass, is that's one thing that you caught that we, you, are there others in there that we should address? I mean, because, you know, how do we do that, and we should do that between now and August twenty-seventh, so does anybody have other things like that?
I think one of the things that I continue to think about is I like consistency, this is an awfully big area, but I think if we don't have personality, we're just going to have, I don't know what the right word is here, blah, you know? So one of my concerns is that in these building standards, we encourage that, maybe it's not a Tudor next to a Cape Cod next to something, but I think everybody is doing the walkable urban, we are across the entire region. The particular document says we want this to look like the Innovation District. I worry that we're going to have too much of the exact same look and feel.
Redundancy.
Redundancy across the whole thing. And it's a big document, so I can't say I read it as thoroughly as maybe I should, but I read it. And I don't see that we encourage variability, because I think what will happen along the Emerald Parkway is going to feel different than some of these regions. So I don't know if that's a PUD desire or whatever, but I think if we don't create character, we're not going to have what we want in that particular area, because why would I pick that versus something else? So I think in here, we need to have some language, and I'm not sure how we do this, but it shouldn't say, it should feel like the Innovation District to me, it shouldn't say that. It should be specific about, we would like to see this type of creativity, et cetera. If not, I mean, I could just cover this up, put the Innovation District, and it would feel like the same document, and I don't think that's, I know that's not the design, but I think, to your point, Greg... But I think, to your point, Greg, about, you know, how do we get some refinements on here? I think that would be a particularly important thing to do. We're seeing some homogeneity in, well, in the Bridge Park that maybe we did or didn't want to have. That some more variability there would create more character. I think we're seeing some of that happening now. I think we could get ahead of that here. So, I would encourage us to find a way to do that in this document.
I think it's good to state that. I think in the end, though, the architects are going to decide that.
But be careful how we say it, or we're going to get, or we're going to get what we asked for.
Yeah. The parcel holders will, if they're going to just demo their building and come back with a five-story building that's so much cooler and more modern, that's going to be up to an architect. And he's going to bring in that parcel by parcel by parcel. So, I think that's how this might get resolved, what you're concerned about. Although I think it's a good idea.
But, you know, as you said, it is a policy statement. So, if that's part of our policy, maybe we should state it.
Right.
No, I agree.
I think one of the things that I would suggest to you, and I think it might be a lesson we learned from Bridge Street, is that we talk about walkable urbanism and we talk about human scale. But if you read about walkable urbanism and human scale and you break it down to the elements that that requires, you'll find that part of what makes the character of walkable urbanism is placemaking. They call it placemaking. And there are principles of placemaking which we don't state here. And I think that, one, I compliment the city for listening to the residents and carving out M U R four and giving the protection to the Waterford and Lowellon Farms. I think that we need to further define what that buffer in the landscape is and what that stream preservation area is. And I think that will make them much more secure in where we're going. I also compliment you on going from the one to two-story on the face and working your way back up. I compliment you on mixed use. There's a lot of suggestions I can make here, but I'm going to hit the finer points that I think are important. The top four things, elements, that in your survey people asked for was to more retail and restaurant. They asked for more walking, biking, and a walkable environment, and they asked for more green space. And even though we need to develop this in a way that brings more income in, we need to balance that with creating that kind of a character that they're all asking for. And in the design principles and the land use recommendations, I didn't see a big enough emphasis on how we're doing that, how we're creating placemaking. Long lawns of green space do not create that kind of character. If you look at cities across the country, across the nation, those central parks, those central green spaces incorporate things like a bandshell or a greenhouse or a, some of them even create, and I noticed a couple of them were, I'll tell you, I'll give you a couple of examples. These central focal points might have a beer tower garden. That was in Munich. Brazil has a flying saucer auditorium. I mean, creating placemaking spaces in this many acreages can bring people into it from everywhere, which then gives you the ability to throw in restaurant and mixed use and retail within the middle of it instead of just out here on the perimeter that just kind of invites you in. So, I think land use recommendations can be maybe enlarged on a little bit in some of this. So, I think we need to, we better balance that public realm and the central green space piece. And on the France Road piece, this is really important to me at least. Planning and zoning was very specific about asking, this is the central spine, as you've said, that goes through the north and then over. If we're really talking about alternative transit, we can't just have a shared-use path and a patio in the front. We have fifty-foot setbacks here to do a lot of really interesting things. I would like to see incorporated, I'd like to suggest, that we incorporated a multi-use transit path that might butt right up against the shared-use path, where e-scooters, e-bikes, little golf carts, anything that's coming in the future, and all you have to do is Google e-pedestrian motorized vehicles, and you'll see thirty of them.
Or go downtown.
Or go downtown, but we haven't allowed that yet. And so, if we're really going to be cutting edge on getting onto France Road, and we've got to make allowances for that. So, I think we need to break out a little bit.
Jane, I think that raises a great point of the open space that we're getting is residual corners or a sliver here and there that is discarded because it isn't used, rather than in the front of coming in for a rezoning and saying, I would like to make this great space, and I'd like to make this great building, rather than starting with the building, because here's our checklist. It's going to be glass, it's going to be this and those things. And then, oh, I have this sliver over here left, and I have that sliver over there left. And, you know, if you want, you can put a bench there. And, you know, you could walk your, you could let your dog out right here. And I think that's, maybe speaks mostly to the heart of my concern about doing the rezonings, because once you have your zoning in hand, you start with the building, rather than starting with the space.
Right.
And it isn't as easy. You're exactly right. It's harder, for sure, but I think it's better.
I don't know what the answer is on the rezoning piece. I'm not expert enough to know that. But I do know that if we're going to redo this entire piece, that the balance has to be that we have to have the placemaking, the pieces that these folks want to have in this environment, as well as improving these office parks to make them very attractive to office workers. Because I think residential is going to work well in here. But people don't want to live in a place that just looks like an office park, a renovated office park. They want to look, they want to live in a place that feels very comfortable, very safe, very interactive, very social, very beautiful, and have ownership of that space. So, for me, the balance isn't there yet in this plan, but we're really close. So, those are, those are some of my, those are some of my comments.
Anybody else? Michael? Anything? John? Okay, so what do we do now? You guys have some feedback, right, Dana? We're coming back on August twenty-seventh.
We do, yes. Let us take that back. Thank you very much, and massage that. Know how quick we can turn that around. We'll keep you posted. I mean, if need be, you know, we can defer table this for another, for another time. We've been working on this for a while. So, let us go back and see what that means and see how quickly we can incorporate those ideas.
And just, I guess, as a final comment, what's really important to me, or I guess, being, trying to be pragmatic, no matter what we plan or desire or want or hope to have here, the market's going to drive, you know, what people could come in and develop, because they want to build a place people want to live and they want to work. And this isn't just the residential parks. There's a whole lot of office workers over there, and there's really not a lot to do in that whole stretch of corridor. There's just not. And so, you know, and I appreciated all the market information that was in here. You know, the market's going to drive, whether we build an environment and they will come or not, so.
So, Jane, do you see something between what's there now and Bridge Park?
How do you mean, Mike?
Well, you said the place people want to be, they're comfortable, they feel safe, it's vibrant. There's restaurants, there's for the office workers.
Right, I see them being very similar in many ways. I think that we can require varied architecture. I think that when we retrofit these large areas, we really should make them very walkable urban environments, mixed use, mixed residential restaurants. I do think that. This is a different animal. Before, we started from scratch. This one, we're retrofitting. So, we have to find ways to get the placemaking within those buildings and make it so attractive. Yeah, it is a little bit harder, but it also makes for a challenging creativity about it, too.
Yeah. Okay, well, there you go. Appreciate it. We will see you back then on August twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Orange forty-seven dash eighteen, Anne?
Of adopting the two thousand nineteen to twenty-three five-year capital improvements program.
I'll introduce it, and I will just point out, and it says right here, that we will have a second reading on this on September tenth, in addition to a C I P workshop on Wednesday, August fifteenth, Monday, August twentieth, and Wednesday, August twenty-ninth, if necessary. And we'll be back here on the tenth.
Exactly.
Angel?
All right, well, thank you. I did want to take this opportunity this evening to just give a brief overview. As you mentioned, we do have three workshops scheduled. And our hope is, is that through scheduling these workshops, that council will be prepared on September second to approve the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-three C I P at its second reading. The department and division heads will be present at each of the budget workshops in order to answer any specific questions about projects, timing, and funding. We believe that this C I P is supportive of the city's strategic focus areas, and in particular, two of them, ensuring the city's fiscal health and promoting economic vitality. This C I P is in compliance with the adopted policies regarding debt and our income tax allocation. We have attempted to continue and will, on an ongoing basis, try to leverage other sources of revenue to fund our capital projects. However, that always has to be balanced against the priorities overall in terms of all the other projects. With regard to economic vitality, this C I P focuses on investing in infrastructure that will be used for economic development, which in turn will hopefully lead to higher income tax revenues for the city. Like C I Ps in the past, we are proposing to continue our investment in our existing infrastructure as it is essential that we do not compromise on our existing assets at the expense of new infrastructure and new assets. And finally, like the two thousand eighteen through twenty-two C I P, we will continue to invest in our legacy office parks, build on our momentum within the West Innovation District and Bridge Street, and continue our expansion in the technology area. There are many specific funding sources to fund our capital improvement. But for the purpose of this evening's discussion, I'm just going to briefly touch on cash, which is really our income tax funding. As council is aware, seventy-five percent of our income tax revenue is credited to the general fund, with the balance remaining going to the capital improvement tax fund. From there, we allocate sixty percent to retire debt service on our capital projects, and the remaining forty percent is used to cash fund capital projects. I do want to note here that, to the extent that we do not spend all that debt allocation, it is then used to cash fund projects. And indeed, the C I P does not promote or recommend utilizing all of those dollars to debt finance projects. Income tax revenues are the basis of our funding for our C I P. This chart shows, going back to two thousand and fifteen, our budgeted income tax revenue versus our actual income tax revenue. And then, within the purple bars, you see the percentage increase or decrease over the prior year. For two thousand and eighteen, I estimated income tax revenues to be eighty-six million dollars. As of July thirty-first, the budgeted income tax revenue, based on a basis of eighty-six million dollars, is fifty-one point three million dollars. And our actual revenues are fifty-one point seven million dollars. So, we are within point seven percent of budget, which is relatively accurate, and I'm pleased with that. But nonetheless, we were projecting to be down one point seven percent. So, indeed, we are down one percent over our two thousand and seventeen actual revenue through July. For the purposes of this five-year C I P, we have projected no growth in income tax revenues over the five-year period. While the infrastructure improvements proposed as part of the C I P are expected to generate additional income tax revenues, until those revenues actually materialize, we don't want to count on those. Certainly, our income tax revenues fluctuate year to year, and should be, should information at any point in time become available that lets us know one way or another, but more in particular, if our revenues are going to decline, we would adjust future C I Ps accordingly to account for projected losses. Additionally, we are in the midst of working with a data analytic firm to analyze our income tax revenues. As we build on that information over time, we hope that this will lead to more accurate predictions for income tax revenues in the future. But the benefit of having a healthy fund balance, as well as updating this C I P document on an annual basis, should give a level of comfort that we can make adjustments along the way should our income tax revenues change one way or another. So, based on an eighty-six million dollar income tax revenue over the next five years, that would result in annual funding for the capital improvement program of twenty-one point five million dollars. And of that, eight point six million dollars would be allocated to cash fund projects. As I showed earlier, there are a number of revenue sources to fund our capital projects. We have traditional sources, which are presented here in this chart, but also, there are other sources such as TIF revenues, water and sewer fees, and bond proceeds that are not shown in this chart. When we look at funding for our capital projects and we look at the requests that come in through our departments and divisions, we first look to see if there's other sources available that are more appropriate to pay for those projects, such as TIF revenues or our utility fees. So, much of our time is then spent just focusing on those that are necessitating our income tax resources. Our traditional sources include the fund balance within the capital improvement tax fund, which has rolled over from year to year based on the projected ending fund balance, the cash allocation from the income tax revenue, the portion of the debt allocation that is not spent from the income tax revenue, property tax revenue, interest earnings, repayment of advances generally from our TIF funds, and any capital improvement fund balance dollars. So, this chart, while it looks complicated, reflects the amount available in each of these sources each year of the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-three C I P. You can see the bottom line indicates that the total resources available, when you take away TIF revenues, water and sewer revenues, as well as proceeds from the sale of bonds, ranges anywhere from nineteen point three million dollars to twenty-three point five million dollars. So, that same funding that you just saw on that slide gets carried over into this slide at the top row that shows the total resources available. In total, the C I P requests for this five-year period are reflected on the second row, titled Total Proposed Project Requests. Those amounts range from twenty point nine million dollars, which you can see in the latter years, two thousand and twenty-three, to sixty point seven million dollars. As I mentioned, we first look at other sources of funding. A large portion of the projects that are submitted by departments do have other funding sources that can be used to fund those. So, what can't be funded through those other sources get reflected in this third row here, titled Total Proposed Projects, project requests, which are not funded through other sources. The difference between the resources available and those projects that are funded using these resources then becomes the balance that is available at the end of any given year. And you can see that on the last row here. So, what this says is, for example, in two thousand and nineteen, of the projects that don't have other sources of funding available totaling almost twenty-three point one million dollars, we have twenty-three point five million dollars available to spend, which leaves about a half a million dollars balance projected at the end of the first year. That balance then gets carried over as a resource available to be used then in two thousand and twenty. Our projects are segmented by department and then categorized as either maintenance or enhancements or new infrastructure. This is done to, again, ensure that maintenance projects are not compromised in order to fund new improvements or assets or enhancements. In total, this five-year C I P proposes funding for maintenance in the amount of seventy-seven point nine million dollars and new infrastructure enhancements or assets totaling one hundred and twenty-eight point seven million dollars. You can see on the right-hand side the total breakout by year of the total C I P, which totals two hundred and six point six million dollars. This pie chart reflects the distribution of the maintenance projects being funded. You can see that our primary focus is transportation and more specifically, on maintaining our streets and parking lots. This pie chart reflects the distribution of our enhancements and new infrastructure and assets. Again, the largest portion is transportation-related, with streets and parking taking up the majority of the funding. This computer does not like my pie charts. And then, finally, this chart shows the funding sources to fund all of the capital improvements as part of this five-year C I P. This area in green to the right reflects our income tax revenues that are used to fund those resources at about thirty-two percent. On the opposite side, you see debt being issued, which is going to, we are projecting to fund forty-five million. So, those two components together make up about half of the revenue sources used to fund our C I P projects. With respect to debt, the city is proposing nearly twenty-eight million dollars to be issued in the upcoming five-year period. Those projects in which the debt service will be funded through income tax revenue, that is, the sixty percent allocation of the twenty-five percent that is reserved for capital projects pursuant to our debt policy, are listed above, namely, the Riverside Crossing Park, the North Pool, Highland Crow Roadway Improvements, the River Forest Storm and Roadway Improvements. So, that totaled twenty-eight million dollars. Additionally, there's funds that are projected to be funded, or there's projects that are expected to be funded through the issuance of bonds related to our sewer improvements and sewer extensions. Those would be funded using sewer revenues. As you are aware, our debt policy stipulates that we can only assume that ninety percent of... that we can only assume that ninety percent of the income tax allocation reserved for debt is actually available. So based on the estimated income tax revenue over the five-year period, you can see from this chart how much is allocated to retire debt service, the existing debt that we have on our books, as well as what would be proposed as part of this five-year CIP. And then, the second column to the right, debt allocation not committed reflects the difference between that debt service funding that's available and our actual debt service. And then the final column on the right reflects the amount of debt that that amount could support using a twenty-year-level debt service at a five percent interest rate. So on average, we still have anywhere between four and a half to eight and a half million dollars available at any given year if everything in this CIP debt-wise happened according to planned. Obviously, what we try to do is combine bond issues. So while this program's bonds being issued each year, depending on project timing, we will try to combine those into one issue or two issues, so we may not necessarily be in the market every single year. So with that, I am going to conclude by just giving a few brief highlights of some of the projects that you will see more of during our workshops. Like prior years, we have had... We have money allocated in the CIP for land acquisition, parkland acquisition, as well as mobility initiatives. Specific to city facilities, there is funding in here for the new city council chambers to be constructed on the Dublin Civic Campus. We are expecting those costs to be offset by the sale of the 5800 Building. Within parks, there is funding for the Riverside Crossing Park, demolition and rebuild of the North Pool. However, that does not include enclosing that pool at this time. And then, West Bridge Street and State Route 161 and Emerald Parkway Street enhancements. Within Stormwater, funds are programmed for the Rings Farm Stream Relocation. This is necessary in order to develop this piece of city-owned property. And on the IT front, funds are allocated for our Smart Cities Initiative, the Connected Vehicle System Infrastructure, the Thirty-three COG Infrastructure, as well as other fiber optic enhancements throughout the city. Our biggest component is transportation-related. You can see the list of those projects that are bicycle and pedestrian-related. Couple highlights are the Riverside Drive East Shared Use Path, the first phase of that, Avery Road Sidewalk Connections, and Wilcox Road Shared Use Paths. Within streets and parking, within transportation, you will see funding for the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard. This project has been on our books for a number of years. However, similar to last year, you will see a gap in funding. We continue looking for other partners to either increase their funding commitments or approach new partners about funding this gap so that the entire burden does not fall to the city of Dublin, or as well as Columbus does have some dollars in this, as well as in addition to the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. There are, again, this France Road Streetscape improvements, West Bridge Street area improvements, which includes a number of design and studies to take place to improve that area. There are funds programmed for the Franklin Street improvements that include utility burial. It yet does not result in removal of the poles from South High Street, but does go through a first phase of circuit relocation on South High. For economic development purposes, we are proposing funding for improvements to Shire Rings Road between Avery Road and Eiderman Road, and then, construction of a roundabout at Avery Road and Shire Rings, as well as the Old Avery relocation. There are improvements to Bright Road to help facilitate getting children safely to school when the Dublin City Schools opens their new building over there. And additionally, funding has been allocated for the roadway improvements to the Highland Corridor. However, light tuttle crossing, we are showing a gap in funding as we explore other partners in funding these important roadway improvements. Within our proprietary water and sewer funds, we have continued the extension program. However, based on resources available, as well as other priorities, we have moved out some of the construction one year. We did not touch anything that was scheduled to happen in 2019 that was going to move forward as previously scheduled. In total, nearly eleven and a half million dollars will be spent between the water and sewer funds over this five-year period to extend water and sewer lines to our unserved areas. We did expect at this time last year that we would have completed a water and sewer rate study to look to see how that would impact our CIP projects for this year. And I'm sorry to report, we have not been able to get that done. We are still hoping to get that done at some point this year, in which case it would influence the CIPs in future years, particularly in the areas of water and sewer. And then also within the sewer fund, funds are programmed for the Deer Run Sewer Upsizing. And as I mentioned earlier, maintenance of our existing assets is just as important. And you can see from this listing here, the listing of maintenance funds that are available to accomplish that throughout the city. So we thank you for your time this evening. And Dana, myself, and the rest of the department and division heads look forward to speaking with you on Wednesday in greater detail about these projects.
Thank you. Any questions from council for now?
Hey, Angel, we did not receive this in the packet tonight for reading.
The presentation?
Correct. Is that right?
That's correct.
Because I didn't. So you're going to send that to us here?
Sure. Yes, I'll send it right now.
And what other additional information are we going to get before Wednesday?
We have nothing that's planning to go out. The binders that you... or what you had received electronically has all of the project descriptions in it. And that's what we will be going off of, starting with our workshops.
Would it be also possible to get some more detailed information on other revenue sources? So the largest of that would be TIF revenues, I guess, but there's some of the others. So there's some schedules on the expected flows of that. And maybe that... I don't think that was in what we have, or is it? And I just didn't see it.
So under Tab Three of your binder... I have a binder on your electronic version. There was a list of resources available. And that lists general fund, capital fund, all of the TIF funds, how much we're planning to use each year. We have over forty TIFs, so there's only about eight TIFs that we're tapping into to fund these... some of these projects. And we don't include the spreadsheets that show all the revenues and all the expenses of those particular TIFs, but you can see the expenses that we are expecting to use those TIF funds to pay for.
There's only eight?
Yes, roughly, as I glanced down here at the list.
Okay. I'll look at that, and I might request some additional information about that and some of the other sources. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. As you had brought up in the past, you and Vice Mayor Amros Grooms have brought up our debt schedules. That is also behind Tab Three as well. We've highlighted in yellow the projected debt. Everything that's not in yellow is existing debt that we already have on the books.
And is it possible to get a binder for this? When we're doing numbers and back and forth, it's hard electronically. Is there any chance we could?
Sure, we'll make that happen.
Oh, okay. All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, thank you, Angel. We'll see you on Wednesday.
Does every member of council want a binder?
I'm happy to pick it up. Don't deliver them, we can pick them up, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Ordinance forty-eight dash eighteen, Ann?
In the provision of certain incentives to LSP Technologies Inc. to induce it to lease a facility to retain and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city and authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Jeremiah, you are not calling.
We need to...
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. It said right here, call, but it's Jeremiah. You're going to be up here for a little bit then, huh?
That's right.
A few things.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So before you, it was an economic development agreement between the city and LSP Technologies, a company that's founded here since 1995. Actually, one of the world's first laser peening equipment. So to put that in perspective, like the fins you have on an airplane, on a jet turbine, so they treat those things, and so instead of replacing it, it kind of refurbishes that. And so it's a very cool technology that you'll hear from the COO next council meeting. So the project results in the retention of forty-two employees in Dublin and the addition of thirteen employees by the end of 2020. It includes a one-time incentive payment and a four-year twelve percent incentive performance on withholding for all the employees from 2019 to 2022. The city expects to net just under three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the term of this agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Okay, thanks, Jeremiah. We'll see them back then on August 27th. I make a motion to waive council rules of order to consider ordinances forty-nine fifty and fifty-one dash eighteen together. Is there a second? Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
I'm Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
These titles are Ordinance forty-nine eighteen, Determining to Proceed with the Acquisition, Construction, and Improvement of Certain Public Improvements in the City of Dublin, Ohio in Cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Declaring an Emergency. Ordinance fifty-eighteen, Leaving Special Assessments for the Purpose of Acquiring and Constructing and Improving Certain Public Improvements in the City of Dublin, Ohio in Cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District and Declaring an Emergency. And the third one, fifty-one eighteen, is Authorizing and Approving an Energy Project Cooperative Agreement Buy-in Between the City of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, OmniBlazer LLC and the Columbus Franklin County Finance, a Special Assessment Agreement Buy-in Between the City of Dublin, Ohio, the County Treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, and OmniBlazer LLC and Related Agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvement projects and declaring an emergency.
I will introduce those, Jeremiah.
All right, so just to sort of give us some... No new information to share from the last time. You'll see this two ordinances, or yes, two ordinances that we read today and the 27th. But I will like to give you some context, not only for this project, but the next resolution that you'll have for 525 Metro Place and the economic impact that this program has had since inception, roughly two and a half years ago. You can see the totals of new investment that we had in the context of what we're talking about, of office competitiveness and what we discussed earlier this evening. But more importantly, we have private sector folks making reinvestments and utilizing this... I think Kathy asked last time, why don't more business owners use this? Question is, I'm not sure, but we're growing them. And so you can see the impact there of two point two million dollars of investment on two hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet, which results in retention of five hundred and forty employees. Now, what 475 Metro Place, why that is at the bottom and not totaled, is actually, we ran through this project, like presented them the pace option. They did not use the financing, they actually did it in cash. However, it's important to talk about the impact that they... An investment that they made in that building that was vacant and now has approximately fifty employees inside that otherwise vacant building. So just want to give some context to this program, why we're bringing it to the company. It's just another tool for us to bring for private sector investment in keeping office product competitive in the market.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Any questions from council?
I just have one. I'm kind of curious. Have they talked to you about the kind of energy savings they've been seeing?
So they haven't... Only one of them, 5500 France Road, has implemented those. The way the legislation requires them, they have the projections that they have to use and benchmark every year. So that will be forthcoming once projects are implemented.
So there's an... It would be called an ESCO that checks that, energy savings?
Yeah, there's a third part of it validates that.
Which is the ESCO?
Actually, yes.
Yes.
I mean, yes. So they have a... Actually, PlugSmart has to come back every year and submit a report to the Finance Authority, yes. Okay, whoop, go ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to note for clarity that there was a tag on this of declaring an emergency, but I think it's important to note that the city doesn't have any financial participation in this. It's just something that we just allow to flow through us, but we don't have a financial commitment in that emergency.
That is correct. Thank you for pointing that out. And so just to... All of these will be that way, and this is to expedite closing on the property so to make sure that they can implement the changes, especially when they're changing rooftop units, boilers, and the like. Try to get in before the cold weather sets in, because they got to be out of work for a couple days while they do that. So thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. We'll see you back on August 27th on that. Public hearing resolutions, Resolution thirty-six dash eighteen, Ann?
This is a resolution approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects under O R C Chapter seventeen ten for 525 Metro Place North project.
Again, nothing new to add, other than you can see the context of this and one of three projects that have utilized the financing.
I will introduce it, Ann. Any questions from council on this?
I just have one.
Sure.
In creating the Special Improvement District for this, for special energy improvements, is there any other opportunity or ramification or ability for a business or commercial property within a special improvements district that this doesn't address? Is there any... By making a special improvements district, is there any other opportunity other than energy? Or that's just pieces and part of what happens with it?
So this petition would be specifically for the Special Improvement District on that parcel alone. So that would be the only...
Well, it's only on that parcel.
Only on that parcel, right. So what you're passing here is their petition to assess themselves, essentially, yes.
All right, thank you.
That is correct, yes.
Each one has to come. So it's not like there's a broad-based special energy district, and this partial is allowed to participate in it. Each partial is asking for it. That's what gives them the ability to get the funding.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
And that's what they have to ask to join the regional Special Improvement District set up through the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Ann?
Ann, sorry, Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven dash eighteen?
This is a resolution approving the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the City of Dublin in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District for 525 Metro Place North project.
Any questions from council on this? Ann, go ahead.
Introduction for that.
Oh, I'll introduce it.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Resolution forty-one dash eighteen?
Adopting a Statement of Services for Proposed Annexation of one point two nine acres more or less from Jerome Township, Union County to the City of Dublin.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Good evening, council members. On June twenty-second, Sanjay Bhatt, Agent Attorney for Petitioner Darshan Shaw, filed an annexation petition with the Union County Commissioners. The property is located on the east side of Highland Crow Road in Jerome Township. The Union County Commissioner's Annexation Hearing is currently scheduled for September sixth. Now, Dublin City Council needs to adopt a Statement of Services Resolution at least twenty days prior to that hearing. The resolution that's before you tonight sets forth all the services the City of Dublin will provide: trash collection, police protection, fire protection, et cetera. Since this property is located within the proposed annexation area of the Dublin Community Plan, as well as located in the exclusive Dublin Service Area for Water and Sewer, approval of Resolution forty-one dash eighteen is recommended, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Ann?
Mr. Keenan? Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Resolution forty-two dash eighteen?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2018 Storm Structure Maintenance Program.
I'll introduce it. Paul?
Members of council, on August first of this year, two bids were received for the 2018 Storm Structure Maintenance Program, which provides for the replacement and rehabilitation of ninety-seven storm structures throughout the city within our storm sewer system. The engineer's estimate was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this program. The funds budgeted were two hundred and sixty thousand. Of the two bids received, the lowest and best was from Strouds or paving, provided the lowest and best of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents. Completion date is November thirtieth of this year. Previous experience with Strouds has been favorable, and we recommend approval.
Questions from council? Hearing none? Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Resolution forty-three dash eighteen?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2018 pavement repair program.
I'll introduce it.
Paul?
All right, on the next day, August second, we actually opened bids for the pavement repair program. This will provide for full-depth and partial-depth pavement repairs throughout the city on minor arterial and collector streets. This was really due to the harsh winter that we had. We saw more pavement deterioration than we had expected. The budget for this program was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of the bids we received, the best... The budget for this program was $450,000. Of the bids we received, the best and lowest was from Decker Construction Company in New Hana, $432,136.75. The completion date for this work is November 2nd of this year. Staff recommends approval and award of this contract to Decker Construction Company. Our experience with them has been favorable. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Resolution 44-18?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2018 bridge maintenance Ashbaugh Road.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Paul, should we get you a chair?
You should. That would be very nice.
Go ahead.
And then actually on July 31st of this year, four bids were received for the bridge maintenance program for 2018, and that's actually the Ashbaugh Road Bridge Replacement. It replaces an existing single lane bridge with a con span three-sided arch, which will also be single lane. This location, if you're not familiar with Ashbaugh Road, is actually north of Brand Road, just to the west of Bristol Commons. The engineer's estimate was $435,000. Funds are budgeted through our capital improvement program for bridge maintenance. That was in the amount of $305,000. As you can see, the bid received from the Reiter Construction Company in the amount of $423,982.92 was over our budgeted funds, but we will reuse, we will use remaining funds from two other maintenance line accounts within the C I P. The completion date for the project is May 3rd of 2019, so actually next spring. Previous experience with the Reiter Company has been extremely favorable with good experience. Staff recommends award of the contract to the Reiter Construction Company in the amount previously stated. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council?
Is this just a, it's time?
Yeah, this, it actually, bridge actually has a restricted load limit on it presently, and it is deficient.
So it's not as much maintenance as it is, we can't keep up with the volume of traffic? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, it's time for it to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Anne?
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
45-18. Anne?
Thank you.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Churchman Road Streetscapes Planting Project.
I'll introduce it.
Matthew?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. This is a resolution accepting the lowest and best bid for the Churchman Road Streetscape Project. This also includes the roundabout at the intersection of Rings Road and Churchman Road. The budgeted estimate was at $150,000. The, we received one build, one bid from Builderscape at the, for the amount of $136,750, which is under budget. Although we've only received one bid for this project, we've had, we've had great experience with Builderscape's work in the past, so at this point we are recommending approval.
Any questions from council?
I got a comment on our, on our procurement of material. Is there something in our specifications say that they have to be in our hardiness zone or above so that we don't bring up plants from four hardiness zones below us and then have them die out on us? Do we have that in our specs? I don't, I know we did at one time. I don't know if it got deleted over the years or?
I, I will tell you that our horticulturists and our city forestry who has also reviewed these plans and the specifications, I couldn't imagine that it wouldn't be, but we will double check.
I, I think I would look into that because, you know, rather than replace this stuff after it freezes out, it'd be good to.
Yeah.
Try to get material that's.
We'll double check that for sure.
Yeah, so please check on that. Thank you.
I have one question. It looks like the tree lawn on the north side of the street is smaller than the tree lawn on the south side of the street from these aerials. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
The area between the back of the curb and the, on the north side, it's the multi-use path, and on the south side, there's a sidewalk.
Is this the slide you're referring to?
One more.
One more?
That one there. So the, the right side, right top side, there's a tree lawn area that looks wider.
Oh, okay, so the shared use path there is wider, which takes up more of the tree lawn is what I'm being told.
So do you, do we know the distance of that tree lawn? How wide of space do we have to work with there? My question's really concerning. Are we, would, would we be better off planting on the other side of the, of the path?
Of the shared use path?
It, it looks very narrow. I, I can't scale things on my, when we just get them electronically, I can't really scale it. It, it looks very small. It, it appears like the tree trunk would be a foot or two on the back of the curb.
Let me take a double check at that, but from what I am hearing and recall, that is about a six-foot distance. The spacing of the trees has been considered based on that spacing, but if there is a concern there and we need to double check that, we certainly can.
You know, if we have less, you know, if you're going to do state street maples, that's, that's a beautiful tree. That's a great selection for there. But if we put it in too small of an area, one of two things are going to happen. We're either going to heave up our multi-use path or we will compromise the health of the tree. And it appears that we have a lot of room on the other side of the multi-use path that maybe we would consider if that area was tight to move it to the other side of the path.
We can check the right of way there and see if that's in effect in our, within our right of way and ability to do that. If so, we can certainly consider that. If not, probably stuck with that tree lawn.
We'll double check that spacing.
We'll check it.
I, I just, I can't tell how far it is on here. That's all.
Will do.
Any other questions?
One other question on the installation of these trees. Are we now coming up with specification that allows the trees enough topsoil and stuff so they don't push up our sidewalks, so they're not planted in the clay zone, or how are we handling that?
Again, the specifications for the planting, I'm going to have to revert back to the inspection of the plans and the specifications from our forestry team to understand. I, quite frankly, I know these are the topics that we talk about regularly, and I'll, I'll certainly check on that, but I, I would imagine that it is specified in such a way that it would prevent that.
So is this a timing issue? Do you want to delay it till the next meeting, or is that a problem for you?
It's not a problem for, for me. If council prefers us to come back with all of these other.
It sounds like there's a lot of questions, so.
Well, yeah, you know, we're not in the digging season anyway, so we could put it off.
We have time.
Okay, maybe you come back August 27th.
You can't get this stuff till October anymore, at the earliest.
Yep.
We'll do.
Thank you.
Do we need to table this or?
Postpone it till August.
By vote, or can we just postpone?
That'd be a good idea.
Okay, I make a motion that we postpone resolution 45-18.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution 46-18?
Authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement with Metro Data Center for the expansion of Dublin Transport 100 gigabit program.
I'll introduce it. Jeremiah?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. What you have in front of you is a recommendation to continue to expand our Dublin Transport 100 gig fiber optic network. This particular program will be expanded with Metro Data Center. Recall, we extended this program back in May, I'm sorry, June with Expedient Data Center. And so this is a very similar agreement, just to continue to deploy our infrastructure, which is fiber in this particular case, for overall economic competitiveness. So happy to take any questions on what is before you.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, could you please remind me how the economics work here? What, what consideration flows to the vendor and to the city through these agreements?
Right, so at the end of the day, well, first of all, we have a program through our 100 gigabit fiber where we try to deploy that, and the city has previously taken the position of going from fiber to the curb, employing laterals into various buildings with the idea of pushing our fiber optic into the building and then essentially becoming a dark fiber provider to various business owners. Some of those are large business owners, some of those are small tenants within leased buildings and so forth. One of the other things we're doing in, in the legacy office parks to keep them competitive. You know, one, to have a office park like that operating on 100 gigabit backbone is essentially unheard of. So what, what we did with Expedient, which was a new entrant data center here in Dublin, was essentially by handing, and, and doing the same with Metro Data Center, which is also a local data center, handing off the fiber optics to them. What they are doing is essentially stepping into our role. So they will deploy fiber to the curb to the building, and we'll allow them to ride back on our fiber optic in order that it's really a retention and expansion play, in order that we're not in the business of doing it, but putting them in the business of doing it. So the value add is our ability to allow them to essentially provide that service that we were providing, and the, and the laterals will be put in at their cost as opposed to ours. So the ROI on that really is on the back end with retention of jobs and expansion attraction of jobs.
So the, the subscriber to this will pay the data center, but that money doesn't, there's no compensation flowing back to the city from that? Is that correct?
Correct. It's an indefeasable right to use the, the dark fiber. This one is, is a three-year deal, so we'll assess how that goes and check the ROI on that for us on the, on the back end relative to the income tax revenues earned off of the program. So it's putting really the people who can do it best in the place to do it, as opposed to us being in the middle of it. Although we've got a lot of laterals that, that we are facilitating into. I think we're about 20 buildings, I think, or, no, I'm sorry, 12 buildings.
Well, 13, 17.
17, okay.
So how many businesses use?
Well, I mean, depends. Those are, a lot of those are multi-tenanted, so.
So we can resend to you the report that we provided at the info only from, I think it was May.
That'd be great.
This year, and it had a rundown of what we used in phase one was, which was 13 original buildings in Metro Office Park. We use that as an impetus to put this in what we call phase two, which has resulted in what we're doing with Expedient and now Metro Data Center.
Great, and part of this question is I saw on the C I P list that we're looking for dollars to do something with, and, and the expanding of Dublin, I saw in our.
Yeah, we, every year we program funding to continue to expand it, and some of that, sometimes that is laterals. Sometimes we'll work that into economic development incentives. Sometimes we may have gaps in our system that we want to over, we have gap in our conduit. We can push more fiber through. So there's opera, it's, sometimes it's maintenance, so it's, it covers a lot of the gamut of just maintaining that infrastructure and where we can adding on to it so it's more robust.
And the benefit to the company is there is no cost to them from their office location back to one of the data centers. So that is a roughly a 50% monthly cost reduction for the term of their use of that. So a competitiveness issue again.
Yeah, so putting that together and what the economic value of that is, I think that would be updated for wherever we are. That would be great.
Yeah, and so these, these, these particular agreements require us, we're tracking this. So we, I meet with them, I actually met, so I meet with them on a monthly basis to make sure we have the latest updates on the companies using it and all the other particulars that you're asking about.
Thank you.
Dana, whose responsibility is it to light the fiber? The?
So essentially, as, as Jeremiah was alluding to, so if a company on one end wants to access the, the data center, the data center will light it. So that, that is a cost to them, not to us, whereas we were, we do have some servers in the, in the data center that we can operate, but we really hand that off to the data center. This is, the expedient deal in this enables those people to do that piece of it without us having the tool belt on so much and then to maintain it and all that. So, I mean, for some, for a small business or a large business or any business in between, to be able to ride this fiber optic back into a data center within you can choose from among as many as at least a dozen.
21 and, say 21 on each.
Twenty-some different providers. It's, it's almost like a $30 cross-connect fee to do that, rather than capitalizing, you know, the fiber optic or the, or the internet to your, to your building. It's an amazing savings for, for our businesses.
Yeah, that's a good deal. That's a great economic tool.
Well, it's really important from a retention standpoint, once they get this, this connection, it's very expensive to duplicate, and they will build their entire network on this connection. And so they will, you will see some of these projects as we report them out. They're in the pipeline. They're literally waiting for this, and their entire network will be redesigned using this particular.
And once you're in, you don't want to leave.
What's that?
Once you're in, you don't want to leave.
Bingo.
Very sticky.
Very sticky.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, Anne?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Resolution 47-18?
Pointing members to the Bridge Park New Community Authority.
I will introduce it. Angel?
Thank you. In 2015, the Bridge Park New Community Authority was authorized with city council at that time appointing four of the seven members, which is pursuant to a higher revised code in particular with new community authorities. The terms of two of our members are up, and we are recommending reappointment of these two members for a two-year term ending March 31st of 2020, and that is for Ms. Lynn Reedy and Mr. Rick Schwiederman.
Any questions from council? Anne?
There's three members to that body, correct?
There's seven members to the body. City council has four appointments, and the developer has three.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Resolution 48-18?
Authorizing the city manager to execute a second addendum for a one-year extension of a lease with Chiller LLC for 7,001 Dublin Park Drive.
I'll introduce it.
Dana?
Yeah, thanks. I'll go ahead and present this. I appreciate Terry put this memo together. He's in the audience. In fact, I'll pick on him because he was here in 1992 when this deal was cut. So, but, you know, it's, it's an amazing program, and it's hard to believe it's been that many years since the Chiller came to Dublin and, and put together this 70,000 square foot ice facility here on about 7.4 acres that the city owned. It's amazing when you read this memo, I think, to see how much participation has happened in that facility over the years. Their lease is due here with the city in September of this year. We are here to ask for an extension of that lease for one more year. They'd like to do some assessment on perhaps some recapitalization of the facility, potential expansion, little work yet to be done there. So we recommend an extent, passage of this resolution in order to extend that lease for one more year so that we can explore other opportunities.
You know, as I read this, it just looked like you're kind of punting for a little
bit of time.
Correct.
So, you know, there are people that come from all over the state to get ICE time in this facility. There's so few facilities for ICE time, it's kind of a big deal, so appreciate the work on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Moving on to the other portion of the agenda, final plat, Autumn Rose Woods, Section One.
Good evening. This is a request for a plating of 37 lots, which is Section One of Autumn Rose Woods, and that is being recommended to you for approval by the Planning Commission, which reviewed it in August of last year, and then staff as well. I have a very riveting four-slide presentation.
Okay. I was waiting for something riveting. Go ahead.
This had the fence issue we dealt with.
Yes, indeed. Council approved that change in June of this year.
You guys want to see a presentation? I don't even think we need the four slides. I think we're good to go. Any other questions from council? I make a motion that we approve the final plat. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Basic plan review, the residences at Tuller Heights. Joanne, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Members of council, mayor, thank you for having us. So the plan that's before you is for a development plan, sorry, thank you, it's for a development plan review. What we're asking you to look at today is the basic development plan, the fee in lieu of for open space, and designation of a reviewing body for future site plan review. So what we're looking at today is the development plan review. The code sections that we're looking at are the development plan, the lots and blocks, the street types, the neighborhood standards, and the use. Just as some information for you, the location is along John Shields Parkway, near to the Tuller Flats and the Greystone Muse Residential Communities. The current site is undeveloped. With regards to the lots and blocks, we're looking at the street grid for Bridge Street District, and the proposed streets are neighborhood streets as per the code street grid system. Again, just a closer look at, the concept is to straighten out the Tuller Road and Village Parkway intersection, and then add two additional neighborhood streets. This plan is just to show you that the development itself is compatible and fits in with the overall development that's occurring in the Bridge Street District. So the property is located within the Sawmill Center Neighborhood District, and within the Sawmill Center Neighborhood District, dwellings for multifamily apartment are allowed and permitted, and the proposal is for a 55-plus residential community. Just some background on the site, the proposal's for approximately 147,000-square-foot building with 135 units. Parking there proposing 67 spaces, 34 onsite with four handicap, and 29 on-street, primarily for visitors. The open space required is .62 acres, and the current proposal includes .24 acres. So we're looking at two pocket plazas, and then a smaller green space to the north and east. In addition, the residents themselves would have access to a rear patio, a front patio that's part of their bistro service, and then there's additionally a street wall adjacent to John Shields Parkway sidewalk, which would be also for the public, not necessarily qualifying for an open space category. So some images, this would show you the pocket plaza that would be adjacent to the Port Cocher. This is a, this is a view of the patio space adjacent to the bistro. Here in this view, you can see the street wall along John Shields Parkway, as well as the rooftop amenity deck. In addition to the open space that's proposed for the site, I wanted to just make you aware of the open space that's adjacent to the site. So in addition to their site, we have the Cooperstone Park, Cooperstone Park, which runs along the back of the muse. There's also the Tuller Flat Square, which is within half a mile of the site. We have the John Shields Parkway Greenway that connects Village Parkway all the way down to the river, and then the Riverside Crossing Park as well. And a preliminary rendering of the building shows that there's a diversity of massing with a corner element as a visual cue. So the basic development plan criteria have all been met. As noted before, the open space would require a fee in lieu of. And the open space criteria as well have been met, again, with the open space fee in lieu of request. So the recommendations from the ART are that the basic plan, which is the lots and blocks, the fee in lieu of, and be approved, and that the City Council recommend a reviewing body for the final development plan and for the site plan, which would be the additional features and architecture and massing. The applicant is here, if you have any questions for them.
Okay. What do you, Aaron, you want to say something first, and then we can fire away?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Underhill. I'm an attorney with Underhill &amp; Hodge at 8,000 Walton Parkway in New Albany. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening and get this project started along the path of more detailed plans and architecture. Do have a couple of representatives with me from Graziano Construction and Development, who are out of Pittsburgh. More on them momentarily. I wanted to talk, this is a little counterintuitive, but more about what this use is not, rather than what it is to begin with. What this use is not is an assisted living or independent living sort of senior, senior living facility that you've seen time and again, and I know there's some fatigue on, frankly, with the city. I've been involved in many of those myself over the last five to 10 years. This is multifamily in the truest sense of the word. It will look, act, and feel function like a multifamily project, and in fact, it is. There's no healthcare workers onsite. These will be older adults. It will be age-restricted in accordance with federal law, 55 and older. In fact, we expect the demographic to be even older than that. But this will be, the only distinction between this and the Tuller Flats are the types of amenities that are offered to the people who live there, and the age of the people who live there. And there, as I mentioned, there's no healthcare workers here, there's no buy-in fee, this is not an institutional type of use. So there's, we think it's very clearly and squarely within the multifamily permitted use in this zoning district, and we think that this will be a very good opportunity to diversify the housing opportunities in this area for the older demographic. Things that will be offered onsite are, inside the community are in these buildings, a bistro, a pub, a fitness center, there is, are organized activities, there will be shuttle service to get people, while it's be very walkable, obviously, and close to many things, but shuttle service available to take you more off-site and outside of the Bridge Street area. Obviously, this will have a zero impact on schools in our minds at the 55 and older level, and here again, we expect there to be even an older demographic here. But we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that this is a distinguishing, distinguished use from those other types of institutional uses you have seen. Another example might be that there are kitchen units in every one of these, as you would see in a typical multifamily unit or project, and we don't have a cafeteria per se, for instance. There are dining opportunities, obviously, for residents, and they can go utilize those at any time, and in fact, those will be frequented in the lower levels of this project. But here again, it looks, acts, feels, and functions as if it's a typical multifamily just with an older population. Graziano Construction and Development, Denise Pampina is here. She, she is the owner. It's been, I think she, you're the third generation. 100% woman-owned business. This has been a family business for some 66 years. They are an operation that not only constructs, but they own and hold and operate these facilities. So they have a vested interest in making sure that it's a quality product and it's going to function as presented, as opposed to someone who would be building and then selling this as an investment opportunity. So we're happy to take your questions, operational questions. I can bring Denise and Chris Jaeger up, who's also with Graziano, to answer those, but we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Appreciate it. Questions from council? Where to begin? Who wants to go first? Jane, let's start with you.
I absolutely have no problems with a 55 and older community. My issue with this is something that's been brought up in planning and zoning, and that is the configuration of the block. The, the block length maximum, I believe, and Vince, you can, if it's here, he can correct me, but a block length is 500 foot, that's the maximum. 250 is as long as you can have a building in Bridge Park. This one is 485 feet. We had requested at planning and zoning that the building be reduced or a mid-block pedestrian throughway. I know it's been answered here with a mid, mid-building throughway, but I don't believe that the mid-building throughway meets the 15-foot open-to-the-public throughway, which is required in the Bridge Street Code. So I would ask, I would just say to council that there are particular requirements when we do these basic plans about blocks and access and alleyways and pedestrian ways that we have laid out in the Bridge Street Plan, that are not satisfied by this particular basic plan. The other thing that was brought up is that the entrance, the face of this building does not face John Shields Parkway. It faces Street B, I think it is. So normally, in the Bridge Street District, in the Walk of Urbanism, we want the energy of the face of the building to be on John Shields Parkway. There is an entrance, but the real entrance is on the other side, as well as the parking. The other thing that was brought up in planning and zoning, which I'll just bring to your attention, I'm sure you can read it in the minutes, is that the open spaces and the common spaces are intended to be public spaces as well. Many of these are not. I also have an issue with the fee in lieu of that's happening in all of the buildings. It seems to be in many of the developments down there. And what's happening is we're losing all the pocket spaces, and we're dumping them all into the big Tuller Square spaces. So we're giving away these opportunities for small pocket parks by saying, fee in lieu of, we'll just put it over here in that square. Well, everybody's putting it in that square, and pretty soon, all you have is that square. So those are the, those are the main, those are the main pieces that I think that we have brought up, is that the, the details also, and I don't want to really get into architecture because I don't think that's important right here, but we were shown a variety of more traditional details on this particular building, and asked them to come back with that, and I'm not seeing that on here. So if you look at the planning and zoning recommendations, there are many that have not been, I don't believe, incorporated in this, this existing plan, so.
Hang on, hang on.
So most importantly, though, I think we have, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, when we talked about, I think it was blocks A, B, C, and D, we're not allowing for the blocks to be divided into small, into more intimate spaces. They're becoming as much building as we can fit on a long block, and we're not really going by some of the Bridge Street design guidelines for those.
I'll let you get there, Aaron. I just want to get everything out on the table, and then we'll address them one at a time. Are those your main issues?
Those are my main.
At least for this point.
Mm-hmm.
Some of this conversation may spur others.
Sure.
Which is fine.
Yep.
Kathy, did you have anything?
Yeah, thank you.
If I could just stop you for a second.
Yes.
So Jane, you have the block length, the architecture, and the open space.
It's the open spaces, the way it faces. It faces back, you know, sort of backwards.
The orientation of the building and the open space.
Right. And one other point is that this is a gateway, the corner is a gateway, and we did request some interesting, unique tower things there, and I didn't see a big change. So that's a gateway. And, and the, we need that, we need, I think that we need that mid-block pedestrian separation. It's too long of a building.
Okay. Kathy?
Thank you. I, I will agree with Jane's comment, so you can put me in that, in that column as well. A couple of things that I thought about when I was looking at this, we have the luxury now, I think, of being able to see a fair bit of development in place and underway, which I think is fantastic, because it's hard to really envision the spirit and character of a place until things are really on the ground. And a couple of the, the things that I've noticed in Bridge Park is that the use of pocket parks, it's very hard to get that gathering place and the community feel in these very, very small pocket parks, and we're seeing that play out again here, and that, that doesn't feel particularly right to me. One of the other things, when I went back and looked at the, the plan for the district, the, I think, third sentence in the plan is, what we are really looking for are developments that create economic vitality and livable, walkable community. I look at this, and I think when the amenities are inherent in the building, we have a pub in the building, we have a restaurant in the building, we have limited parking, parking spaces, I'm not sure how this fills this character of creating economic vitality or livable, walkable in its definition. I, I'm not sure that that was, is in the spirit of what the desire of that development is. So I wonder about that in the scope, again, since we've had some opportunity to see what livable, walkable looks like, I'm not sure that that fits in that particular character. Then from just a sheer mass, massing of the building, it is a gateway, and I'm not, as it's currently presented, I'm not sure it fits that criteria either of being a gateway facility. So those are some of my concerns with, with this proposal.
Is that sort of the block length, the building, and that?
And the character of it. I get, but again, if we're doing livable, walkable, Greg, here, and creating economic vitality, I'm not sure how this, how this particular development is doing that.
I get that. The last one, though, the massing, though, was more of the block.
Size, yeah.
Size, okay.
Thank you.
And how do you, how would you summarize, so I don't have to write down more than five words, your first concern?
Well, the, the pocket parks was the first concern, but the other one is, does this particular proposal meet what we're trying to accomplish?
The more spirit and character of the, in the environment, not just this building?
Thank you.
Sure, okay. John, you got anything?
No, I, you know, I agree with my two colleagues. I think the mass of the building, I mean, I get it from a business standpoint, what they're trying to do, they're trying to have this senior retirement facility, and to break the building up might break up that concept. I think as far as orientation, I think the building's probably oriented correctly. I agree that possibly this probably might not be the best use for this site, mainly because it doesn't meet the criteria, as already mentioned, about what this area really is, is a walkable community. In the backside of it, just on the landscape side, I noticed that probably if you were going to actually do this, the, the hedging pilaster thing probably should be continued and tighten up the space and close it off, so just have access and entry without viewing into this other subspace. The pocket park thing is, is a problem there unless, you know, the city in the future would develop a park environment for residents, so those are my comments. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Michael, you got anything you want to add?
Question-wise, what are the demographics of some of their other, in terms of age, of some of their other projects, number one? These appear to be roughly 1,000 square feet or less per unit. And what kind of rents are they, are you talking about? And that's important, because we've talked over many years about the need for affordable housing for seniors. So if this is indeed affordable for that element of our population, and you talked about 55-plus, but, you know, you're talking about an older demographic, that kind of, I guess that would probably put me in that ballpark, huh?
[laughing]
Some of us others. I'm not really feeling the need for that right now, but.
Just you, Mike.
Just, just some, and really to focus on the whole discussion we've had over many years about finding affordable space for seniors in this community.
Thanks, Mike. Christina, you got anything you want to add?
I'll echo some of the same sentiments in terms of site use, gateway, placemaking, all the, I just, I would agree with many of those comments. I think the other concern that I have, and I think I expressed this before, was the nature of the TIF financing on this. I know we sort of get away with it because it's technically a business. It's not really residential. I'm a little uncomfortable with the optics, though, because it looks like a residential TIF, and that does make me squirm a little bit, so that gives me a bit of pause as well. You know, I don't know that you can fix that in terms of a basic plan review. That's just a concern that I have. That's more with the fundamentals of the, the logistics of the thing than it is with the design.
Okay. Christina, Chris?
I would echo the comments about engagement. It's certainly, just because there are people sitting on the outside of a fenced-in area of a building, doesn't mean that it's engaged in the street network. We have, this is far too lengthy of a building, that, really two key places we're trying to connect that really provides no interaction to the street network. It concerns me the number of parking spots that they're requesting, because it tells me that they don't want very many bike stations, and they don't want to park cars, which tells me these people aren't going to be coming and going very frequently. When we're trying to have actively engaged street network and that vibrancy, a building that offers that offers all of its services on the interior, the drawing shows... Sorry, I've got to get to the right page. Here it is. The drawing shows that they have a bistro, a café, they have dining, they have maker spaces, they have pub, they have fitness, they have a gardening area, they have a market, they have a lounge, they have a billiard area, they have a salon, they have a library and business center, they have a multi-function theater, and they have a lounge. All of that goes to tell me that people aren't going to be coming and going from this building very frequently, that it will primarily contain all the services that the folks that live there will want to need. The whole idea behind Bridge Park and the vibrancy is to have people engaged on the sidewalks, engaged in the street network, going from place to place. That's what gives vibrancy to an area. So this place is really going to be robbing us of the vibrancy because all of those activities will be housed within a single building. So that's certainly one of my concerns. The finished floor elevation is they want to do a retaining wall so that they're never more than two and a half feet above the adjacent sidewalk elevation. Retaining walls are really not very pedestrian friendly. And if they need a flat surface, then they need to find a flat parcel of land. If interior step is going to be a problem for their constituents, then they need to find a piece of ground that's flat. Because really what we want the buildings to do is we want them to reflect the topography of the area. And so, you know, we have forced this a lot in the various office buildings throughout Bridge Park because we didn't want too many retaining walls. The one that we have in front of our, the exchange there, I think it really robs the street network of vibrancy. Anytime you put a retaining wall, you rob the street network of vibrancy. Certainly not in favor of that waiver. The vehicular parking waiver that's requested is concerning to me because it indicates the lack of activity, as does the bicycle parking waiver that's requested. The exterior louvers, this is going to get us into the hotel feel. You know, many of these units are about 400 square feet. So they're having individually controlled climate control per unit rather than mounting something on the roof network and having interior vents. It's, you know, far more cost effective to put something that would protrude through the wall and put a louver on it. The claim here is that the louver will create an architectural feature. I've never seen a really good-looking old louver on an air conditioning HVAC unit. So I am not inclined to give that waiver. The change in roof plane or height waiver that they're requesting, there's really very little fenestration on this building. Most of it, if I scale it, it's a 1 to 50 scale. It appears that it's maybe two feet at the most. It's hardly enough to give a shadow line. The change in the roof plane, they're trying to accomplish a faux look of a fenestration change by changing the parapet heights. And I don't know that that's an effective way to make that look real nice. You know, the facade is just, it's almost flat along John Shields Parkway. There's two sections and if the scale is right, the bump outs are maybe two feet. Other than that, we're just putting on different color brick, different kinds of siding on a flat surface to make it appear as though there's some fenestration or there's some relief. In reality, there isn't. The facade materials, I think we have six different colors of brick on one building. There's four colors on the one page and then the two colors on the next page of these drawings look like they were yet additional colors. And so what we're trying to do is make a fake building. We're trying to make one building look as though it were several buildings, but it isn't. It's a building and it's a, as was indicated, it's a blank space right now. So I don't know that we want to have a fake building. I'd like to have an authentically good building. And then the open space, you know, again, I don't know much about the demographic here. I know when I go to Florida, there's a lot of 55-plus communities that are in proximity to where we are when we go to Florida. And the pet owner percentage is very high of this demographic typically. I don't know what the rules are going to be or anything like that. But, you know, to put this kind of burden on our taller square is going to be really problematic. And really, the open spaces that we are provided here are residual rectangles where they couldn't put a building, where they couldn't, you know, behind the dumpster over here and, you know, a little bit on this corner over here. And, you know, we want well-thought-out places for people to be. We don't want whatever's left over, you know, we can put a bench there. So we're really lacking in equality of the open space. There is some here. It's a very poor quality. It's just along the street. There's no areas of respite. I know there's the claim that it's an area of respite, but it's really just a sidewalk adjacent to a sidewalk along the street with no amenities in it. So there's only a cornice on the corner, the one corner of the building of the tallest tower. You know, a building like this should have a cornice that was inclusive rather than these parapets, metal panel parapets. It really needs some cornices or something to make it look attractive. I'm concerned the tree removal, there's over 300 caliper inches of oak trees to be removed. They're really good oak trees. None of them say relocate. They all say remove. So I'm not, we have a lot of time invested in those trees, that's part of our street tree network. I don't know that I'm willing to start that clock all over again. And then the last concern I have would be, what the next step for this would be, would be the economic development agreement that they would be asking for. It appears to me, from what I can glean from the reading, that we're probably in the neighborhood of $3.5 million of city investment in our transportation network for this. I get that it would be TIF-able, you know, it would be TIF-able and that we could replace, you know, a portion of that from the TIFs that we would generate. But after that, there's really nothing in it for us. And we would have used a really great piece of property on a really great corner that's an interesting entryway into this district. And I'm not sure that, because of these waivers and the other things that I've said, I'm not sure that this reaches the bar to justify that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So let me try to get my head around this. So Joanne, if maybe you could address for me the, I mean, I'm not going to take my time to repeat everything that was just said. I know there's quite a bit of unity of thought up here, I would imagine. This mass of the building and the block, the block, like Jane said, 500-foot blocks, 250 feet standard, and this is 400 and something feet. Could you comment on that?
Sure. So I don't have the drawings in front of me right now, but I checked one of the planning reports that we wrote and the building is approximately 400 and some feet long. Let me, sorry, let me go back to the page. I just circled it. So the site has...
102, 419. Is that right, space?
I thought it was, it's in here. It's a lot more than 200.
I'm just going to round. Let's say it's 420, just for argument's sake. Go.
So the way our code reads is that for a mid-block pedestrian way, the building actually does not meet that requirement, it meets the requirement of not needing a mid-building pedestrian way, but it is allowed to have a mid-block pedestrian way. So what they've provided is a pass-through, much like several of the buildings that are now on not B block and C block, where the building isn't broken into two parts, but there is a pedestrian way through the building itself at the first floor, and that has been provided.
But the, but from what I read on the Bridge Street code, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is it open all the time?
It is not, and the Bridge Street code does not require that it be open all the time.
But it does require in a mid-building, if you're going to use that as a default, that it must be, it must meet the requirements of a mid-block size and be open all the time.
I think, with due respect, I think you have it backwards.
Okay. Well, I think we need to decide that because my understa, I would like to, well, I would like to say that it does need to go, it needs to be separated and have the ability for the public to go back and forth. That's one of the requirements. But if it's locked, it is not a mid-block pedestrian way, then?
No, it is not a mid-block pedestrian way. It is a mid-building pedestrian way.
Okay. But the intent here is that people can get through and not have to walk all the way around. That's the intent of that piece of the code.
It is the intent of it. And I think that there's, that's, it's unfortunate I don't have the code in front of me. There's two different criteria and the criteria, one is to specifically for the public to be constantly moving back and forth, and the other is more for the users of the building, visitors, staff, the actual residents. If it was an office building, for the office workers to be able to moving back and forth. And so I think that there's a difference of the purpose of the two criteria, and that's why one is mid-building and one is mid-block.
Okay.
But I would, I definitely will go back and write that out for you in the morning.
What about this, the issue that Jane raised about the orientation of the building? So it's oriented, the face is looking to the north?
The building is oriented with its public face to John Shields Parkway and the parking lot is behind the building. That's actually a code requirement that in multifamily, the parking has to be in the back of the building. So John Shields Parkway is considered the principal frontage street and the parking is on the backside on the neighborhood proposed Street B.
And what is staff's sort of understanding of the open space and the pocket? What I get, once we get past those sort of nuts and bolts, we get into the more of this, the feel doesn't feel right kind of thing?
Yes.
What are staff's, what do you think about that issue?
So I think that it's very important to recognize that right now, this is just a lots and blocks. Is it the right size? Is it the right shape? Is it what has been prescribed in the Bridge Street code? Many of the things that Ms. Grooms has described are things that are addressed during site plan review, and I think they're very important elements to be reviewed during site plan and certainly we want them to be addressed. Many of the comments that came from Planning Commission were also pertaining to what would be a site plan review, and this is the development plan review. So I think, and forgive me if I'm speaking for the applicant, but...
I'll get back to you, Erin. Don't worry.
We definitely want to take all of those items into consideration, including how does a seat wall address the street, whether the open spaces are appropriately located and sized. But those are interior to the site and the request tonight is only for the lots and blocks and not for the details of the site plan, not building massing, not materials. We're not asking you to approve any of those items today, but rather to give your opinion on them and provide us with input so that we can convey that to the applicant and they can make adjustments that would actually create the facility that you're interested in seeing.
Is there a reason why? So like, sometimes people will come in, for example, with a tree waiver or some, wherever in our community, where they're saying, "This is what the rules require me to do, but I just physically can't do it on this. It's either cost prohibitive or I just can't do it. The topography doesn't allow me to do it, so I need that condition waived for this particular spot." This just being an open field, is there a reason other than we need more building to not just require them to provide more open space? I mean, it's open now, right? I mean, it's just...
Right. I think...
Do you understand my question?
I do.
I don't know if I said that very well, but...
No. I think that there's probably some site placement with the building, whether we moved a little bit closer to John Shields Parkway or adjust the way the parking is laid out so that those open spaces could be configured to be more of a public amenity and not feel like they're just the corner. I think also there was a question about the number of trees being removed, and I know that I saw that also and scrutinized that. And most of the trees being removed are actually happening in the straightening of the taller and Village Parkway. So that's something that has to be considered as part of the streetscape improvements and isn't really exactly what's happening because of the placement of the building.
But is there anything that would prohibit them from providing the required open space if they perhaps had fewer units or it was a smaller building?
I'm sure that a reconfiguration of the building could arrive with more open space. Again, it's a site plan something, and if that's something that the city council wants to say that you need to readdress this and the fee in lieu of is not approved at this time, that would be something that could come back at final development plan and at the site plan.
Okay. And I appreciate that, all, Joanne. For me and then Erin, I'll let you come back up, take a bite at this. I agree with Mike and I think that we have for a long time talked about how this sort of, I hate the term empty nester, but that empty nester, that product, we need that product in our community. We, you know, it doesn't generate, it probably has fewer cars because there's probably couples using one car or less, and it doesn't really generate a lot of kids and put pressure on our schools. And it's a product we don't have. You know, there's, I'm Keenan, he can't barely cut his own grass anymore. So he doesn't want that big yard. So, you know, we want, sorry, Mike. So, you know, that product is really desired. And I think that this, and I think you were right, Erin, in addressing that concern about the assisted living and the pressures and the things that that does to the EMS and everything else in our community. We get that. We understand that pressure and I appreciate you clarifying that. I think it's a great product and concept. It sort of feels to me, when you're, you kind of put the building all the way out on the road and really the activity is going to happen behind it, all the stuff that Chris pointed out, basically, and I don't mean to insult the plan, but it's almost like a mall. You know, you go into the mall, you don't really ever have to leave. You get everything you got right there. And I think what I hear my fellow councilpeople saying is that they were hoping this would be more of a part of a community as opposed to a kind of an island where people are in there on their own, in their own space. The public doesn't come in and they don't really come out and it doesn't have that sort of interaction. So, and I have a lot of respect for my fellow councilmembers, a lot of whom were on planning and zoning for a long time, and they're a lot smarter than me about these issues. Those are the things for me that are very concerning. It seems to me that the open space is, when it's a big open field right now, is a product of what you're building on. I mean, if you build a building so big you can't have open space, and it wasn't, the desire is not to have a fee paid in lieu of open space. We'd rather have the open space. And so it seems to me with, you have sort of a blank canvas out there right now to do with what you wish. And then finally, that, I think it was Jane had brought up, the architecture. And I understand what you're saying, Joanne, that this is, what I always get a little bit frustrated with is this is only sort of the first step kind of thing because the first step sets expectations. It just does. And if we just pass this, then you would be absolutely reasonable in expecting that it's going to look an awful lot like what's on this paper. And so I think we're doing you a disservice and we're not doing our jobs if we vest you with that expectation because after all, it's just the first step. Because some of this stuff, you know, you guys say lots and blocks or whatever it is that you say, it sounds to me like these issues go to directly that stuff. So I don't know, Erin, do you want to address some of this stuff? You don't have to. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I want to give you an opportunity.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. I think many of these can be addressed at a later stage. Of course, we're going to request a tabling here tonight. I just wanted to mention a few more things. I think we can work on some things. I, for one, have not been involved in this project from day one. It's only since it went through Planning Commission. Hopefully, everyone can appreciate that this represents a lot of time and effort and investment of money to even get to a plan of this level. And so there's always this push and pull of, you take what the Planning Commission said and come to council with a complete change and take your chances. We wanted to hear from you first. I do think the interesting thing about Bridge Street is it's a three-stage process. I guess you can condense it to two. It was interesting because I think when Bridge Street first started, it was intended to be this, hey, we can get these things done a lot quicker, but oftentimes it takes longer than a preliminary development plan and final development plan used to. And that's not a criticism, it's just the truth. But I think there'll be ample opportunity to continue sharpening our pencils and I can... understand why, if you're not satisfied this evening, why we might want to come back and see if we can, we can do some of that. I did want to mention that, you know, in terms of deviations from the code, now, the deviations we're asking for may be viewed as substantial to some of you. I do not think they're really numerous, and, you know, sometimes I think reading this code that I'd be, it'd be quicker to read the Bible. I mean, it's that thick, and it's difficult to, to throw all this into the mixing bowl and get something that meets everything. So inevitably, you're going to have variances or deviations, and I guess the question is, can we get those to a place where they're not seen as substantial, where they're acceptable, and we'll have to certainly work toward that. As far as the parking's concerned, I think, Chris, you may have mentioned that, a lack of parking. We do believe we can facilitate more parking on some prop ground we control. We were here again, back and forth tonight about whether or not that was the right thing to do, so we could certainly look, look at that.
I'm not necessarily saying you should have more parking. I think your, you know your, your client knows your needs best, and if that's all that they need, that's indicative of the comings and goings of folks. That was my only point, not that you need it. I don't want you to come back and say, well, you asked for more parking.
Sure, sure, fair enough. Last point I'll make is, is regarding the TIF. You know, inevitably, in, in the Bridge Street district, just because of the nature of the infrastructure that's required, nearly every development's going to need some help somehow, but I don't think we quite got there. We've been working with Terry, and I think there's a broader community-wide improvement that could be made as a result of this project, which is the Toller Village Parkway straightening into a T. And a good deal of the, the money from the TIF, I believe, is going to be going toward reimbursing that cost. And so I wanted to point out that this wasn't just an ask of the developer, but there are some broader community purposes that, that were trying to be served there and could be assisted by this development. So, with that being said, we'll certainly take what you had to say under advisement and see if there's anything we can do to address those concerns. A lot of work to do, obviously, but we'll request a tabling.
And you know what, Erin, and I appreciate that, and I, I think, I think all these things can be talked about. You know, I, I sat up on this council for a little while, and one person that would come in here, and, and you're certainly not in this situation, but it would seem like the city and the project were miles apart, but he would get it done, and that was Ben Hale. Came in here, and he said, look, I hear what you're saying, and I know where we need to be, and then he found that middle ground, and so there's your challenge.
Really like that guy.
There's your challenge. And with respect to the TIF, you know, our friends at the township, Mr. Richter and the chief back there, we, we have all kinds of different policy issues to talk through between us, and those are very solvable problems. You know, that's fixable stuff. I think all of this stuff is fixable stuff. I, I personally would greatly appreciate if you took a shot at addressing them and see if we can't come up with something. And I really do believe that if we do this appropriately in the long run, it can actually make the process less expensive for you. We are mindful of how much money and time and energy it takes to even get to this point, but that doesn't detract from what we feel like our obligation is, so.
Dublin's process is difficult, and I've been, worked here for a long time, and I've been working here a long time, but I, you can't argue with your results, so we certainly will do our best to try to, try to address as much as we can.
Okay, great to say. Anything, Joanne, anything else you want to add?
No, thank you.
Dana, you want anything?
I, I only want to add that we, we put the additional memo in there about the potential of a development agreement, because we wanted to lay that groundwork early on and not bring that at a later date. And also had encouraged the applicant to have a discussion with the township, and I, I want to thank them for having done that with Eric Richter and the chief, and that, I thank you for, Eric and the chief for taking the time to do that. And I think you saw in our, our memo about how we might resolve, you know, such a TIF issue with, with the township, and that's something we probably should be talking about from a policy perspective going forward. So I, I want to thank the applicant for doing that and everyone for having that discussion.
So you need a motion to table?
I think we probably do.
Also move.
Hang on a second, Jane's got one more.
I, I want to say something positive here that, because I feel like in some ways, you know, we absolutely want to see, I, I agree, having a 55 and older and a senior community is a good thing for the district. It makes a whole community. And one of the things that came up in planning and zoning, and I want to say at the City Council so that they hear it as well, is that imagine ourselves there, right? This is an opportunity to, to create a new kind of living style for an older population. A smaller building requires that they get outside a little bit, walk across to the pub, cross that mid, that mid-block pedestrian way. If you were able to use mixed use on the bottom, and those places were open to the public like little stores are in small cities, a little bookshop, a little pub, a place that four guys can go and play some checkers or something, where they can sit outside and talk to the people walking by. If you create that kind of community where people don't live inside it, but they are forced to go outside and, and meet in those pocket parks, walk a little bit, take their dog, and talk to the lady on the porch, that interaction is what we're looking for in Bridge Park, for 55 and older, for 25 and older, for 15 years old and older. We don't want a self-contained building. We want to open it up, have those open spaces, use mixed use at the bottom so that you have a place to go to. It's what we all want when we're older. That's what we're asking here.
Okay, Mike made a motion, I'll second it. Anne, please call the--
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Thanks, Erin. Staff comment. Dana?
Yes, thank you, members of council. Just a few items here. During your break, I had sent out a memo as a follow-up to the West Plaza Infrastructure Agreement, and I put that in your packet, because I want to make sure that was out there for the public record, but as you may recall, I needed to get a little bit of feedback from you. It's the reason I had pushed that out. Thank you for that. I got some feedback. It primarily had to do with the types of plantings. We've made that adjustment, and we're continuing to move forward with that. There's, there's no action needed from you tonight, but I just want to acknowledge that for the public record, and also thank you for your input. I do have a request to remove from the table Resolution 40-18. This is the agreement with Ohio University, our reference, the Cultural Performing Arts Center, and I'd like to schedule that for a hearing at August, at your August 27th council meeting.
I make so motion.
I'll second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Also, I have another request, similar. We, I think we had told you we would try to be back at the end of August with follow-up on the Riverside Crossing Park East Plaza Phase 1. We need to push that date, because we're date-specific, I need to have a, have a motion to change that. So I want to request that you postpone consideration of the development plan, site plan for the Riverside Crossing Park East Plaza Phase 1 to September 10.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Okay, yeah, I also want to just say congratulations to the Finance Department for their award tonight, and what a great set of professionals we have, and I appreciate all the great effort that they do. And speaking of that, I, I just want to acknowledge the staff and all of our volunteers relative to both July 4th and the Irish Festival celebrations. I thought those went really well from our perspective, and just want to thank everyone. Thanks to council. I know that you had a break, but I would argue you haven't had a break. I think I saw as much of you all during your break as I do when you're not in recess, so thanks for all the different events that you all showed up for and participated in. I hope you got a little bit of time to rest. The, let's see, and that's it, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Committee reports, P and Z, Jane.
I was not at the last P and, I was not at the last P and Z, because I was at the Marysville Ballin Festival with council, but I do know that there was a training session, and I don't believe that they, I don't believe they had any cases. And that's it, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jane. Admin, Chris.
Yes, Dana was kind enough to send his follow-up for our retreat, so as I have stated, we have Anne's goals, we have Dana's goals, we have our minutes. Please chime in on those in next week if you can, so that we can finalize a report that we would submit to Homer in HR, because our next review is going to come up here quickly, so we got to get this one done.
Thanks. Chris, Community Development, John?
Nothing.
Finance Committee, Mike?
Just remind everybody, we have another meeting Wednesday at 6:30. Another one on the 20th at 6:30, and another one on the 29th if needed. Historically, we've never needed that third one, but it's there if, if we have to go that far. I would remind everybody, Fay Gibson Retirement Gathering is on August 23rd, 4 to 6, at DRCRC, so be there if you can. She's put a lot of years in here and a lot of her good hard work for us, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Michael. Public Services Committee, Christina?
Nothing, except I think in September, we meet to get an update on the Aging in Place. I am going to the Aging in Place Update Meeting actually tomorrow as well, so I'm really looking forward to hearing what the staff and others have been doing.
Coda, Kathy?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. The annual Coda luncheon is this week. It is interesting when we talk about all of these developments, how important mobility is becoming and how different it is. We're not talking about bike paths, we're talking about multimodal paths, and if you've spent time in downtown Columbus lately, you have to look to your right and look to your left so you don't get run over by an electric scooter, which have taken over the country. So mobility is in this very interesting period, so the luncheon should be interesting. I think I had also mentioned that at a prior meeting that the Coda group launched something called the CPAS program, which were corporations are helping finance mobility back and forth to work. Part of that has led to great success in use of the Dublin Park and Ride, which is now, I would say, the particular lot oversubscribed. So, it, which is good news, people are using this, but I just want to let folks know that if you get there and the lot is full, you're, you should and are encouraged to use the parking garages which are down the hill. And I, and I know that, that you still have to make it up the hill, and we'll have to work through that, and I've talked to Dana about this, but there's ample parking, and the good news is some of this, this program and this, this change in mobility is happening, so take advantage of it. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
I was unable to attend them at last meeting, but you were.
I went.
So you can tell them what good things, I heard rave reviews about your participation at the meeting, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of enthusiasm. There was a whole room full of people. It was down in Bridge Street, one of the, what's the name of the thing, the blue--
Brick House Blue.
Brick House Blue. It was there, it was a good meeting, there was a lot of enthusiasm. They're focused on a lot of different projects. They had Ms. Rozansky, Jan Rozansky's daughter-in-law, was there, to talk about the scholarship fund that they're working on, and I did not stay for the whole meeting, but they seemed like they are enthusiastic and they will be putting some energy into that.
Well, thanks for covering for me.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
We have not met since the end of the last school year, but we now have all of our meetings scheduled for the upcoming school year.
Good. Morp, Chris?
Oh, we had a luncheon regarding Hyperloop, and Kathy and Jane were kind enough to come, and I tell you, there's some really exciting potential out there, and it will be incredibly interesting to see what comes to fruition. So, they're busy.
Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to report, thank you.
U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor Group?
Okay, we had a meeting this, this past week, the, and we met at the Jerome Village Barn, so we had an opportunity to hear from the Nationwide Realty Group. If you haven't been out there for a while, there is, there is a lot going on in, in that neighborhood. I think it was 3,000 families, I think is the number being planned, so there's an enormous amount of development. I think some interesting opportunities as it relates to recreation and parks and some things, and, and opportunities to learn and participate with some of our communities. I will also comment that the overlay framework for the Smart 33 Corridor that I think we've mentioned a couple times, received, had, I've signed an agreement with a firm to help put that into motion, so we're looking forward to that, and there's strong engagement through all of our partners up and down the corridor, so moving forward.
Just real quick, do, do you want to mention that the ODOT is going to pursue, is it a $750,000, something like that, study of the, of the corridor? Have no idea what that means yet, but that they did announce that.
Thank you.
One thing I, I will add to that is that they made a mention, the, and Dana, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they said that they wanted to partner with Dublin, the Nationwide gentleman said that they would like to partner with Dublin on land use concerning sports fields. And I remember talking to the group at Convention and Visitors Bureau, and they were saying that because we are limited in how much larger land we can have for sports use, that conventions and kids coming in for sports is an opportunity that they can't always satisfy, because we don't always have enough of that land. So I don't know if that's something we'll continue to talk about, but I thought that was an interesting point he made.
Right, I, I think too, he was alluding to the notion of would the folks who run those programs, not the city, but those DYA and others, might have, would they have an interest in running those for them? I, I guess kind of how I took that as well.
Okay, yep.
Thanks, Jane. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Let's see, Bread is going to be the big festival from the Dublin Arts Council, be October the 13th, and it will move from downtown to Kaufman Park, so save that date.
13th?
13th.
Thanks, John. Board of Education, Christina?
So I gave you my Board of Education update already, and did not give you my Dublin Friendship Association media, update. I'm all tired, it's been a long day.
Okay.
So I'll give you my DFA update now. So we did meet, we met at the Arts Council, which was great. We did talk about the Bread Festival. It was a lot of sort of general updates. We had invited the folks from the Greater Columbus Sister Cities International to come to the Irish Festival. I do think they came, they just didn't come to our opening ceremony, which is sort of where we expected we were going to see them. And their comment was, they were utterly impressed with the city's ability to put on a festival of that size and that quality, and they were just, I think mesmerized by the whole thing, and really looking forward to doing some work with us in the future. And we talked a little bit about the upcoming school year and some of the opportunities for engagement with the Japanese community as well, and you were brought up several times, as well as some potential contacts with India. So that's what we talked about, and we'll have another meeting in two months.
You know, what's really amazing about the events is it's not just the Dublin Irish Festival. It's, we have the Memorial Tournament, where millions of people come into this community, and then you have the Fourth of July, where thousands of people, and then the Irish Festival right on top of that. So it's really an amazing stretch of resource that this community and staff puts together. Washington Township, Dana and I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Richter. Oh, he's going to say something.
Oh, my goodness.
Didn't even invite him this time, and here he comes.
Start a new tape.
No, actually, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for taking time during your summer break, and Dana, to meet with me and allow us to share some of the data that we've been putting together. I think it was a good conversation. I appreciate the opportunity. I always enjoy talking to Dana anyhow, but I don't get to spend much time with you, so thank you for taking the time to do that. Also wanted to kind of reiterate what Dana said. We appreciate the opportunity to hear about some of these developments and things that are going on. The chief and I did get to meet with one of the proposed developers, which is, it's very helpful for us to kind of have an idea of what's coming in and what potentially is coming in, what's going to happen. So I just want to take a quick moment to thank you for that.
Well, we did, we met with Eric, and Dana and I did. He is informed, he is educated, he is professional, he's open-minded, he's everything that you could look for.
Don't brag about him too much, Mayor.
I'm telling you, so far, so good. We'll see how it goes, but we truly are in this thing together, and, and, you know, we'll get all the different challenges straightened out, worked out, and addressed and everything else. I can tell you, when this last thing came up here, everybody up here was saying, well, that TIF, we've got to look, what's going to do to Washington Township? I, I mean, it's, it's an issue we're aware of, and we're willing to do whatever we can to make sure it works for everybody. So Chief, you got anything that, he's showing you up now. You've never come up here and said a word. All right, thanks, Chief. Council Roundtable, Jane?
No, I just, I don't really have anything. I, one thing I want to say is, and I want to say this to staff loud and clear, the events that have gone on this past year and the work that they have put into it, and watching most of the staff work overtime, 12, 15-hour shifts at the Irish Festival in the heat, and never sitting down with a smile on their faces, all I can say is, oh my God, that is just amazing, amazing for everybody. So please, please, I know I dropped a little thing on the Dublin News thing to thank them, but I think from City Council, we all say, thank you, thank you, thank you. So that's, that's the most important thing. And then, secondly, just want to thank council too for being open-minded about, talking about some of the principles of the community plan and the welcome of urbanism, and I think-- that have gone on this past year, and the work that they have put into it, and watching most of the staff work overtime, 12, 15-hour shifts at the Irish Festival in the heat, and never sitting down with a smile on their faces, all I can say is, oh my God, that is just amazing, amazing for everybody. So please, please, I know I dropped a little thing on the Dublin News thing to thank them, but I think from City Council, we all say, thank you, thank you, thank you. So that's the most important thing. And then, secondly, just want to thank council too for being open-minded about, talking about some of the principles of the community plan and the welcome of urbanism, and I think this is a great discussion, and I really appreciate that we're having it.
Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
Again, I'll also echo the thank you for the festival. Not only were staff smiling at the end, all the volunteers who had been there every day from beginning to end weren't smiling, but were smiling proudly and had energy, and they could have done it a fourth or a fifth day, it seems, and so I thank and congratulate the community. It is impressive, and a lot of fun, too, so thank you for that. And I don't know if I have a little, oh, I wanted to show this. The TEDx event occurred, I think it was the 7th of July, so I know a lot of folks had some July festivities, but Jane and I were there, and if you recall, a couple of months ago, the group of absolutely amazing young adults came in and said we were going to put together this program. So Jane and I went to the first TEDx event, and it was, I think, four to five hours, and I have to tell you, the talks were so riveting that people were not even checking their devices during this. A lot of it, local talent from the high schools, as well as the business community, as well as the medical community. I have encouraged Christina to work and to put together a little best-of video, so I'm hoping she's going to be able to do that, because if you didn't get a chance, it was really wonderful. And they're already planning, although most of these no longer Kaufman or Jerome or Sciota students, they're all headed off to college, I think, but one, but they're already planning the next year's event, so it was fantastic. So thank them and congratulate them, and it was a lot of fun to get to be there. And the Emerald Campus ribbon cutting was really fun. It was a robotic ribbon cutting, and that was also very inspiring. It was unique. So congratulate everybody and wish them the best as school starts off. I wanted to make just a couple of quick comments about a couple of things in the information data that we received. We will, I guess, get a request to look at the DEC contract for review, that we bring those ideas along with it, and if that means we need to think differently about when we do that contract review or whatever, I just think there's so much going on there that I think it's important to coordinate those two events, so if that's possible, that would be wonderful. And I see, Sue's not here this evening, but she provided a very nice update on some of the marketing work that's underway on workforce.
She's back there, she's just in the very back room.
Oh, I didn't see you. Oh, you're hiding in the back, Sue, thank you.
Happens to her all the time.
Yeah. A very nice memo on the workforce development campaign, very interesting. A couple of things, and not to be, not to ask for answers tonight, but it's, I think, a unique approach, and I would love to see a couple of things, what are some of our expected outcomes from that in terms of not necessarily driving traffic to social networks, but actual workforce output, and I know you're having a tech day in Columbus to roll this out. I would like, maybe if we get an opportunity, to get a little more information about what we think some of the outcomes are going to be, because I think it's quite, is exactly what we're hearing across the country needed, and, you know, I think a little bit about this, so I appreciate that and look forward to some more information on that. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I just want to say that I hope some of you had a chance to go out to our Challenge Park that was really generated by initiative of City Council, and it's a pretty amazing park that they built for us. There's also a children's play park that's just really wonderful. There's a really extensive dog park. I finally got out there Saturday and Sunday, and, you know, it's the old thing, if you build it, they will come, and it's, you know, you've got to hand it to Metro Parks because Tim Maloney's funding really comes from Franklin County, and this thing's over, I think, in Union and Delaware County, I think, his park's sitting up there, most of it. And for him to agree to our request to build a, and you've got to be proud of this, we took a, sort of a boring passive park, and now it's really a dynamic, fun place to go to, and it all happened in less than a year and a half, so, you know, kudos to Tim for being that kind of guy and that neighbor, and yes, we put some money into that park, but he really made the quality of life in our area a lot, lot better, and it's really fun. And bring your gloves because there's a lot, I think Dana will appreciate the military aspects of climbing over the walls, the nets, the whole thing, it's a real hoot.
I don't miss those days.
So, and, you know, and thanks to Greg and Christina for, you know, working on that project, and special thanks to a colleague of mine, Steve Brown, a fellow landscape architect, who was a chief designer for Metro Parks as a landscape architect and worked on it. Kudos to Matt for liaison work, and Eric Krausey put a lot of time and effort into this, too, a Dublin resident, wanting to try to make it as cool as it could possibly be. So it was just amazing, the wave, wave after people moving from one event to another. It was just really overrun with people, it was just really cool to see that kind of activity in a park. And then I took my break, I decided to take a study tour of Riverfront, so I started out in the English Channel, went through Paris, and all the way down to the Mediterranean, the Somme, the Seine, and the Rhone River, because I wanted to see if we could get some ideas for our little river park, so I won't bore you with some of the ideas I picked up. I figured they had 2,000 years to figure it out, so they might have some good ideas for us. And then the next thing is scooter laws, because I see, and I know this is going to be directed at you, Jennifer, because the problems over in Bexley and Arlington, and I think these things are really cool, don't get me wrong, but I don't know what kind of regulation we're going to need on them to make it a fun, feasible thing for our community. And as you guys already alluded to, we're going to need scooter lanes, or we're going to figure out where they can use the bike trails.
Yeah, I mean, being downtown, they're all over the place.
They're laying all over the streets.
We'll see, we'll consult with Columbus.
And they run these things at 35 miles an hour, some of them, so, you know, this is, you know, and they don't need a motorcycle license, and they don't need a helmet, so we've got to come up with something here to make this thing workable for us, so. Those are just some of the ideas I'm going to pass on to you, so thank you very much.
I'll think of it. Michael?
You know, community down south, they have a whole hierarchy of who can do what on the paths, the golf carts versus the bicycles versus pedestrians versus the cars, and they strictly enforce it, so if you have rules, it can work.
Yeah.
But those are the kind of things you have to deal with. In the interest of the late hour, I'm going to save my other comments for next meeting.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
Just a couple of quick things. Dana, thank you for the update on the Dumfries Court East sewer issues. You outlined your sort of interim steps, you know, really, really in detail, so I appreciate that. How long do you suspect the permanent design will take?
Megan, you want to give me a guess, or? We just really don't have any idea right now.
No?
Let us keep creeping down the road on analysis and...
All right, well, let me know.
Yeah, we'll try to report back on that.
And then, just a quick reminder for everyone that school starts Wednesday. Yay! Just be careful out there with all the buses and the kids, and, you know, school bus stops and stuff may have changed, so just watch out for everybody and be good neighbors. Thanks.
Thanks, Christina. Chris?
A couple of things. I did go to the Arthritis Foundation, they had a reception on, attended on Greg's behalf, and sent our thanks for the cars that they do for the Fourth of July, and they had a really nice auto show. We had the Morpsy meeting on the 12th, and then we had a great meeting here with Mike Shattuck and the folks from the city of Columbus to talk about panhandling and clean zones and all of those sorts of things. So hopefully we'll see some more of that come back. They brought their chief legal, in-house legal counsel, and I think we learned a few things that we can perhaps apply. Greg, got to go with Greg to swear in the chamber officers and their new board of directors, and congratulations to them, and the Hyperloop Luncheon on the 18th, and then I got to speak to the Chamber Youth Leadership on the 26th, and this is kind of funny, and then Greg stops by after I finish, and they ask for his autograph, and nobody asked me for my autograph, I just want to let that be noted, but they wanted his autograph. Thank you to staff for a really exceptional Fourth of July and Irish Fest, it was really well done. On the 29th, I had the opportunity to participate in the women's cricket tournament, there was a, we had a regional cricket, women's cricket tournament, and it was, it was a really great event, and I'd never seen cricket played live, competitive cricket played live before, and these gals were, they were really good, and they had a great time, and they brought people from all over Ohio to participate in the cricket tournament. Wanted to thank the Marysville City Council for being our hosts on the 9th at the Balloon Festival. Several of us were able to attend, and they were very kind, and it was good to be with them. And again, the ribbon cutting was, I took my son with me to the ribbon cutting, and he wanted to walk afterwards and pick out his classrooms of the classes that he would take, so hopefully we'll get out of the eighth grade and we'll have the opportunity to go to high school, and maybe he can be in one of those classrooms.
Thanks, Chris.